It is Monday, July 27, 2020. It is 6:30 PM. We do have a quorum present. We have all five elected officials in attendance tonight. At this time, we will set the agenda. I'm only aware of one change, and the sponsor on item 11-4 has requested that that be pulled at this time, so we will honor that request. 11-4 will not be heard. If you are in the audience or in the hallway and you would like to follow along on the agenda, they are published and they're in the back of the room on either side. If you are watching at home, the agenda is published on the city webpage. I should have announced, you would have noticed that we are under the Wilson County mandate for mask-wearing, and City Hall is posted as such, and everyone in here has a mask on. Those of us at this table tonight, we're going to be doing a lot of talking, so once we got to the table, we have the prerogative to remove that because we are more than six feet apart, and so some of us have already chosen to do that, some may do that later. But at any rate, we are following the protocols as it relates to coronavirus. At this time, we will start our meeting with the invocation, as we always do, and we will ask our fire chief, Jamie Lufman, to lead us in the prayer and in the pledge.
Please pray with me. Our loving Heavenly Father, we come to you this hour asking for your presence, your blessing, and your help as we are gathered together. We pray for your guidance in the matters at hand and ask that you would clearly show us how to conduct our work with a spirit of joy and enthusiasm for the citizens, businesses, and visitors to our blessed city of Mount Juliet. Give us the desire to find ways to excel in our efforts, help us to work together and encourage each other to excellence. We ask that we would encourage each other to reach higher and farther, to be the best that we can be. Dear Lord, I ask a special blessing tonight for the Hassler family and those in the community who need similar help, whether it be physical needs, spiritual needs, financial needs, or just the need of your unending grace and peace. We ask all of this in the name of Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Chief. Appreciate that. At this time, our first order of business is approval of the minutes. We have two sets of minutes to approve. The first one is the meeting of June 22, 2020. Is there a motion? There's a second. Questions or comments, changes to the minutes? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That passes...oh, sorry. One abstention. That passes 401. Next set is the regular meeting of July the 13th, 2020. Need a motion on that, please.
Motion.
Is there a second? Questions or comments from the commission or changes? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes 401, I believe. Okay, those minutes are approved. At this time, we will have citizen comments. There will be a couple of ways that we'll do this. Anyone that's in the room, or in the hallway, or even out in the...outside the building who would like to comment on any item on our agenda, they are welcome to do so at this time. And then we also have comments that have been submitted previously via, I guess, email. And Sheila, do you have those prepared for us? You'll be...you can read those after we have the actual live comments. So go ahead and first, whoever's first, please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Stuart Resor, S.T.U.A.R.T., last name R.E.S.O.R., architect, and we're here to speak on the Providence Central Project. We would like to...we are in favor of the project, but we have a few suggestions that we hope they will follow. A key one is to the highway interchange that's going to go in at Central Pike. They show a high-speed intersection over there, and I think that's a huge mistake for the town to have all the cars coming off I-40 at high speed onto those small streets back there. And one of the properties there, that gentleman was concerned that the ramp cut his property in half, and that would no longer be needed if you went to a standard intersection there. Also, I would like to see that the Central...Providence Central Project have more amenities. If they don't show it on the map, maybe they could at least agree to that. We would like to have the sidewalks similar to what we have over in Lake Providence and similar amenities, open space. Also, we would like the wetland area to be better defined on their mapping because that should be preserved. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to comment at this time?
Good evening. I'm Jay Friedel, and I am here tonight because I am chair of the alcoholic beverage board, and I understand you have a resolution tonight that deals with a revocation of a beer permit that we made about two weeks ago. I just wanted to say, not to advocate on either side of the issue, but to just give you a little bit of background on why we made the decision and some of the history behind it. Although we were deeply reluctant to pull that beer permit because we knew it had the potential of shuttering that business and hiring those and destroying those jobs, we were obligated by the law to do so. Excuse me. We want to know that in our discussions, we came to the conclusion that understanding and agreeing to follow the law that mandates compliance with those...the food, alcohol, beer sales ratios is an essential part of applying for that permit and has to be a concern on the permit holders. Excuse me. I have to tell you, this was tough. You guys have a tough vote tonight on that one. It's an essential part of holding that permit from the day, first day you get it. The history of the ratios, I'm sure you have, will show you that that's been a concern of our board since the first quarter they were in operations. Now, we took the action to revoke that permit unanimously after requesting new numbers in March of this year, and then, of course, we didn't meet in April. We all know why. And then we gave an extension due to the COVID-19 crisis because restaurants were just reopening when we met in April. We gave that extension for a couple months. We hoped we would see those ratios change significantly. They changed slightly toward making the goal, but as you know, the numbers put us about less than halfway there to a $5 food sales to a beer ratio. So we had no choice. Each person voted to revoke and did so saying so that they were reluctant to do so. Now, this is a rare thing. We talked about this on the board a number of times, and all this is, of course, in our public meetings, but I just wanted to get it into the record tonight. But we were concerned deeply about setting precedent on future cases. Now, we don't set that ratio. You guys do it through the law, and you have adjusted it. And we would like to suggest perhaps, and we'll be talking about this in the board, that an elected...which is exactly what's happening tonight. Elected officials are taking the final step here. Appointed officials like me, excuse me, appointed volunteers like me. They don't...they can't go to the ballot box and vote me out. I serve five years, as long as I'm in the community, and then I move on. You guys have to go shake hands, solicit votes, and shuttering a business and destroying some jobs is a tough thing to do for an elected official. So we're going to, in our future meetings, we'll talk about that, but that was one of the core issues we had. Now, in conclusion, I just want to say, I know that's a tough vote tonight. It was a tough vote that we had two weeks ago. We're obligated because of the law. You guys make the laws. And so the board really lays it in your hands tonight and hopes that you'll make the right decision. Just to reiterate, we were reluctant to do it. We were obligated to do it, but we think that in the future, even though this is a rare case, that perhaps we ought to make a recommendation as to whether the permit is revoked or not, and then you guys then close the deal choosing to reject or accept that recommendation. Thank you.
Hey, thank you very much. And hey, Mr. Friedel. Mr. Friedel, thank you for serving for so long on that board. Appreciate that very much.
Well, it's seemed pretty long, the last few months.
Yeah, I understand.
But it's usually a good down.
Yeah. Thanks. Yes, ma'am.
Hi. My name's Cheryl Marks, and I live at 208 South Dunwood Lane, and we are vehemently opposed to our community connecting to the community that's going to be put in next door. Our street is a very narrow street, and we only have 10 houses on it. The only reason somebody goes down that street is to go home. Now, if we connect to the next community, there are going to be umpteen people coming in the entrance to our community, cutting down my street to go to their house. They're not going to continue on Rutland to their main entrance and have to backtrack to their house. In our community, we're allowed to park in the street. There is not often where there isn't somebody in the road, so if you have to go two cars past each other, it's not going to happen. We also have an extremely narrow entrance. One lane in, one lane out. We do not have a second entrance to our community. So there will be so much more traffic turning into our community to cut down my street to go to your house, because if you live right next to me, you're not going to go down Rutland and go in the main entrance. You're just not going to do it. And so our passion is there is got to be a different way to connect us than to go down our street. Because like I said, the only reason to go down there is for them to go home. It doesn't provide them any entrance to other major streets. We don't connect anywhere. We can't use their amenities. They can't use ours. So the only reason to drive down my road is to go home, but you don't live in my community. But you're using my street, you're driving to my house, you're causing more traffic. And their solution, our proposal for a solution, there is a gate behind my house that leads into that field. That could be a very minor entrance exit instead of them coming down our road. We have kids who play in our street all the time. That increased traffic, there will be nowhere for these kids to play. And their solution, they're sort of...but you get nothing out of this. This connecting to this community, we get nothing out of it except for increased traffic. And their solution or their proposal of putting a turn lane down at the bottom of the Rutland, turning onto Providence Trail. If you've ever been on our street when school time is starting down Rutland, it can be backed up all the way to the top of that hill for people to go down that road to turn to take their kids to school. If there's a turn lane at the bottom so I can turn to Mount Juliet Road, I'm never going to get to it. Even now, with the traffic that we have, we have that problem, but you put 10,000 more people...exaggeration, of course, down there, all going down Rutland to Providence Trail.
Okay, you need...
You said there will be another public meeting, or we're going to be notified when that is right now?
I don't know if anybody has that date for sure, but keep an eye on the city agenda on the webpage, I would think.
For you to let us know when that is, okay?
Yeah.
Ma'am, I missed your name. I'm sorry.
Cheryl Adkins. Actually, my last name isn't Marks. That was my maiden name. My last name is Adkins. I live at 208 South Dunwood Lane.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm on the very end of the cul-de-sac.
Hang on one second. Commissioner Giles has a question for you also.
Yes, ma'am. When you moved onto that street, was there...did you know that there was a possibility for expansion next door to...
Yes, but we were told by the developers who developed our community that they wanted, if that should ever come available, they wanted to buy it. So our street would be continued, yes, but only for the people who actually lived in our community, not for another community, so that I knew if you drove down my street, it was only because you lived in my community and you were going home. But these people are going to be driving my street to go into another community to go home. They have no reason to be on my street other than to use it as a cut-through. And trust me, if I was them and I lived right next to me, I would use it as a cut-through.
All right, thank you.
That is our big concern.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay.
Hi. Good afternoon, council members. My name is Ramonan Mohan. I live in 209 South Dunwood Lane. I'm neighbor of Cheryl who just spoke before me. I'm here to express the same concern that she was expressing, and...
Can you speak...get a little closer, maybe, to the microphone?
Is it good now?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, that works. Good. Okay. I'm...yeah, my name is Ramonan Mohan. I live in 209 South Dunwood Lane. I'm neighbor of Miss Cheryl who just spoke before me. I live in the same cul-de-sac as Miss Cheryl. I would like to express concern about the road that's being built to connect the next community that's going to come up. That's the South Porthon, and I'd like to just visually tell you what the problem is going to be if they're going to come through our community. So this is a community of close to 100 houses, and this is a small road, which is very narrow, which was built just for close to 10 houses. And if some...if this road will not be able to support the 90 or 100 houses on the traffic that's going to come through this narrow road, and even if we look...we were told that the city wants to connect both these communities because it would be easy for the emergency vehicles to pass through. Even if we look at this scenario, this is a 35 mile per hour road, and this is a 15 mile per hour road, and even if an emergency vehicle has to come through our community and to pass through theirs, it's going to take them at least one or one and a half minutes more than if they pass through the direct road and have an entrance separately from the South Rutland Road. So again, this is...this cul-de-sac is a kid's paradise. We have a lot of kids playing there right now, and connecting these...this cul-de-sac into the next community as a secondary entrance, even though the main entrance of this community is put up here. And I'm pretty sure that even if somebody is who's trying to come from the I-40 into this community, Google Maps and any sort of map is going to take them through our community rather than taking them through this entrance, which is very far away. And this road, this narrow road, is definitely not built...it was not built to support the traffic of 100 new houses. And yeah. Yeah. So I would just...I've been living in Mount Juliet for the last three years. I've loved the city, and I've always known that Mount Juliet City puts the safety of people before anything else, and building a road connecting to a community of 100 houses is just going to jeopardize the safety of this narrow road.
Sir, ahead and wrap it up.
Okay. Yeah, that's all I had. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to comment at this time?
My name is Deepi, and I live in 209 South Dunwood Lane. I'm his wife. And I was initially told that all this cul-de-sac...our cul-de-sac was going to be removed as a part of city's belief in connectivity, and that kind of took me aback. I didn't know what to think of it at that time. I started thinking back how all the other communities in Providence Trail was connecting with each other. So this is what this particular map says. This is Belinda Parkway where Target and Mount Juliet Fire Station are all there. And it...if you take a ride from Mount Juliet Fire Station, you're able to connect to Ashton Brooks, which crosses Providence Trail Road, and Sterling Woods. These are all different communities. So I thought there must be something important that city thinks when it comes to talking about connectivity. But in our case, this is the junction where Rutland School is, and this is one closed community. This is our community, Providence Landing, and the new community that is about to come. All these are connected with the same road. There is absolutely no important connectivity issue that I'm able to visualize. No emergency vehicle can go through faster than this particular road. It cannot connect through this way because once the connectivity is in place, there's definitely going to be speed bumps. Just...that's what assured to us once the cul-de-sac is removed. So all the speed bumps will actually reduce the speed when there is absolutely no need for a connectivity...tactical reason for a connectivity. I don't know why city really wants the connectivity to be made here. We even talked to the developer, and he also mentioned that this is what city mandates. It's not something they want to do. We are okay with the cul-de-sac going, but I don't understand how it is going to benefit either of us, either us or, I mean, the Providence Landing community or the new community that is coming up. And it's affecting only 10 of us, our houses, which is in that street, and rest of the community people, our own neighbors, don't think it's a big issue. We can see that everybody is going to use that particular road as a cut-through, and we also do that. This is sunny, mead dry, and during school time, it's really difficult for us to get through, so we use all these cut-through ways to get into our Providence Landing community. But I understand the connectivity part here, but I don't see the connectivity between Providence Landing and the new community.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to comment at this time?
Hello. Are you able to hear me? Yeah, okay. Hi. My name is Venkata. I live in same Providence Landing subdivision. I live in 203 South Dunwood Lane. I have the same concerns as my previous neighbors because this road is not equipped enough to carry that much heavy traffic towards the Rutland School and the Providence Trail. It's going to be doing more harm than, you know, help to the 10 families that are living there on the road, and it will become literally impossible for us to go out of our home on the peak traffic times in the school, in the morning times or the evening, that everyone who has to go to the Rutland School has to go through my road from the new community that is coming up. So I sincerely request everyone in the board to see the other options to connect the new community to the South Rutland Road rather than cutting through to our road because it's...only option for me is to go out of that community rather than living there. It's not about giving help to the new community, but it's about safety. Kids cannot be walking on the road, and if you see the road, it's not even wide enough for two cars going in a normal speed to go in two different directions. So I sincerely see...want everyone to see the safety concern there rather than connectivity between the two communities. I think safety comes first for me, then connecting. That's what I would like to bring upon to everyone here.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yep. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi. Jeremy Hayes, 120 Southwest Cook Road, Mount Juliet, Tennessee. You know, this is almost a bittersweet night for us. You know, it's sweet because we keep seeing more and more people wanting to move to Mount Juliet. It's a great community, great city, you know. It's bitter in a sense as well. My daughter is a pigeon-race and pace. We're raising on the same property where, going back to my great-great-grandparents. We know that we're going to grow. We know it's inevitable. My only fear right now is that due to the wide fear of this pandemic, that Providence Central has been rushed through. I'm not opposing it. You know, by all means, you know, we've been needing the infrastructure for years since the time I was a kid. You know, we've been promised by politicians that, you know, they would do something with Central Pike. You know, we even had one raise our gas tax because of it, and now we have a proud developer coming in saying they'll actually fund the development of this property, this road. So that's a pro. But at the same time, I just...I hate to see something rushed to where people don't have the opportunity to get out and voice their own opinion. You know, right across the street from me, it's very gray, so we have the Weathers, we have the Easts all around us, you know, who I've known since literally the time I was born. You know, I was driving my tractor down Central Pike a couple of weeks ago to get...put diesel in it, and for the first time, it really kind of hit me that I'm not in the same Mount Juliet that I used to be in. As cars are flying up, you know, my bush hog flipping me off, honking their horns. It's a changing place, and we all know that. I just hope people have the fair opportunity to voice their own opinions as a community as...if this is right for us as a city of Mount Juliet. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Richard and Lori Lyons at 1041 South Rutland Road. We wanted to speak regarding our property. It looks like this is not going to work with the city purchasing it as a park. That's unfortunate because it's right in the middle of hundreds of new homes, and there's really a park that's needed there. We've kind of bent over backwards trying to make it work, but I guess it's not going to. But since we are going to remain the owners of that property, there are issues that I think need to be dealt with. Everything in that area on Rutland Road drains onto our property. There are a number of creeks. They all drain right into the lake that's on our property. And I did read the Porthons' proposal regarding how they're going to deal with runoff, and I happen to be in that business of environmental mitigation, so I've dealt with this for years. They're proposing detention ponds to catch the water, slow down the runoff, and then it all drains into my lake. Unfortunately, detention ponds have the outlets at the bottom of the downsides of the pond. Therefore, all the pollutants that drain into those ponds drain right out. It slows down the runoff of water, which is one thing that the pond is supposed to do, but the other thing it's supposed to do is keep the pollutants from running onto other people's property. There's all kinds of wildlife living in our pond, 50-year-old turtles and all kinds of fish and frogs and everything, so what have you. Retention ponds, however, with the outlet at the top, and they have to be much larger, by the way, and they have to be maintained on a regular basis, you know, that slows down the pollutants from running right out of the bottom of the pond and keep going out, you know, into the environment. They have a chance to settle down to the bottom of the pond. So as this...if we're going to stay the owners of this property, this is a major issue that needs to be dealt with because if it's not done correctly, if these...if it's not retention ponds and they're not...there's not some kind of funding to keep them cleaned out on a regular basis, then there's going to be problems for years to come, and I see it all the time. 10 years after, the developers have developed a subdivision, they leave, everything's polluted, and there's no recourse to fix it at that point, so it needs to be dealt with beforehand. Thank you. I think that's all we have.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else that is wanting to make a comment at this time? Oh, yeah. Go ahead. Well, that's all right. Go ahead. There's...he's asking. There's no line, per se. Yeah.
My name is David Menton. I live at 180 Tillman Drive in Mount Juliet. I wanted to thank Jennifer for having her town hall meeting. I guess it's been a month ago now. One of the questions that was asked at that meeting, because we're voting on apartments, but everybody knows it's just about speeding up this interchange, that's why we're doing the apartments. But one of the major questions that couldn't be answered is, when this interchange is done, will it be done in conjunction with widening...
I guess it's been a month ago now. One of the questions that was asked at that meeting, uh, because we're voting on apartments, but everybody knows it's just about speeding up this interchange. That's why we're doing the apartments. But one of the major questions that couldn't be answered is when this interchange is done, will it be done in conjunction with widening Central Pike? Which to me and anybody that knows anything about traffic would only make sense that you don't put a high-speed interchange and spill it out onto a two-lane road. Now, I know it's a state highway, or we call it, but it's really just a two-lane road with no shoulders. So everybody was concerned that we were gonna bring in this interchange and just bottleneck it there. And nobody there had any answers. So uh, I took it upon myself to email T dot. And within 30 minutes, I had the answer to that question. Uh, I'll tell you the question I asked first is basically, can you tell me if Central Pike will be widened in conjunction with the construction of the interchange and what that timing might look like? Will it be widened before or after the interchange is put in? Also, how far in each direction will Central Pike be widened? Uh, Shane Hester from T dot replied to me in 30 minutes. Said the interchange or the construction will primarily focus on design and construction of the new interchange. It is currently funded for engineering in the current fiscal year. A separate project is planned to widen Central Pike from Old Hickory Boulevard to Mount Juliet Road. It's currently in the planning phase with engineering funding targeted. And we know what these targets are like. I think we've learned our lesson from those in the past. Targeted targeted for the next fiscal year. The interchange is currently planned to be the initial phase with the widening of Central Pike coming behind it. So again, we're we're trying to build apartments to speed up an interchange that we're gonna spill onto a two-lane country road with no shoulders. If anybody can tell me that makes sense, please do that. We would love for them to be coupled together. However, the department is one of only a handful of states that operates as a pay-as-you-go state. And the two projects combined would be a tall task to authorize them both for construction in a single budget year. Projects such as these on average typically take between eight to 10 years. To advance from the planning phase, which is targeted for next year, to the contract letting, therefore, we are still a ways out for both projects. The right-of-way acquisition process will be a lengthy process for the widening project of the many, due to the many properties that the acquisition will be required from along the route. I I don't understand why we're building apartments. And I'm not necessarily against building apartments. I wouldn't say I'm for it either. But while we're doing something simply to speed up an interchange, that that is gonna cause more nightmares for Central Pike. Uh, I know they're talking about this nugget, this free money we're gonna get for for doing all this. Things should stand on their own merit, not because somebody's throwing out a million or two or $3 million. Uh, thank you for letting me know. I'm out of time. My last point is, to me, this is like building a new dam, this interchange. But you can't open it if you don't have a river built for it to flow to. So that's my two cents worth. Thank for your time.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to comment? Okay.
My name is Kat Reed and I'm here um to speak on behalf of the resolution to for the reinstatement of the beer permit for Kat's Bar and Grill. It's been a difficult year, I think, for everyone, especially with us being in the in the restaurant business. Um, we were asked two months ago to make sure we brought up our sales in comparison to the other while we were just struggling to have a a button, a seat for anyone to even come out in the community. Um, so we did. We brought up our sales by a great deal. We brought it up almost 24,000 additional each month. That wasn't necessarily food against beer, but it was just in sales period. Um, we try to do things legally and by the right way. I think the reason you pay taxes and things is for your school system and for your community and the others. Um, when I came in here, when we built, you know, our our place, we brought in and invested over $250,000. We employed 22 employees, most are single mothers with children. We try to be an asset to the community. Our business is a restaurant that's family oriented. We offer something a little bit different because we have food, liquor and beer, but we have entertainment and at any time you could bring your young kids there too. We don't give the city any problems or any calls or things like that. And and if you have, I think it's no more so than any other restaurant or you can't control what people do at all times. But we're asking for your um to vote to help us reinstate uh our beer permit so we won't falter. Because taking that away, even in the last two weeks since this has happened, our sales are down to not even a quarter of the other when we're already hurting in this economy right now with with the way that the COVID and everything. It will absolutely make me falter. Um, and I I would just hate to think that everything that we have invested in us being in Mount Juliet. I love being in Mount Juliet. Think of the other jobs and things you would take away with it. So thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you very much. Anyone else? That's it? Okay, Ms. Sheila, you've got some. Oh, sorry.
Uh, Kenneth Powers, thirty-two hundred Charleston Way, Mount Juliet, Tennessee. I just wanted to speak on behalf of the Central Pike project. As some of you may know, I've been around Mount Juliet for a long time in that area and it's made a lot of progress, in my opinion. And I think this is a continuation of that that dream, that journey and has been for the betterment of Mount Juliet, in my opinion. And to do the kind of things in the future, uh, we need to get the road in and the interchange. And I just wanna voice my firm support of this and say I love Mount Juliet and we haven't finished yet.
All right. Thank you, sir. If there's no one else, Ms. Sheila, you got some that came in via email? Would you please read those into the record for us?
He says he's 75 and lives at seven eighty South Rutland Road. And this is concerning the Providence Central PUD Amendment. Thank you for your service to our city. I would like to call your attention to note three sheet C one point zero eight of the originally approved plan. To my knowledge, none of the actions addressed in note three have yet occurred. If the boundary of the cemetery has not been determined, how can it be incorporated into the proposed amendment? One of the reasons reasons for the professional determination is that they are par- parallel. How do you say that word? P E R I P H E R A L and unmarked graves.
Okay.
Probably Indians and slaves that need to be included in the boundary. One, my plea is that the actions identified in note three be accomplished so that the modifications to the PUD can be considered. Two, much of the remainder of the Providence Central Plan is on land that was farmed by my grandfather, Floyd Smart, a teacher and leader in the community and a Wilson County Commissioner for 49 years. Perhaps it would be fitting to name a road for him in the future development of Providence Central. Thank you for your time and consideration, Don Smart.
Were there others?
That's all I have. The other gentleman that emailed, he spoke first.
Okay, very good. All right. Thank you all. That will conclude our citizen comments. We will start with Commissioner reports and comments. And we will start with Commissioner for District One, Commissioner Ray Justice.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, first of all, I want to thank everyone for the thoughts and prayers while I was in the hospital. No, it was not COVID-related. Clear that up real quick. But it was very, very kind, the emails and the texts uh and the phone calls that I received and really appreciated from from folks here at the city and uh. And I missed you all for a whole month, so. But thank you, and that's all I'll have to report.
All right. Thank you very much. Going to District Two, Commissioner and Vice Mayor James Vanez.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to to say what a a good job the um city staff and stuff did with the Fourth of July celebration here in the city. And, you know, just really made the city proud that night. And I know it's been a few, a few weeks since we met on it, but I didn't want it to go without mention. I also just want to draw everybody's attention to the the fact, and I'm hoping our city manager will speak to the some good economic news that we got for the city. So um, you know, don't lose faith in the city of Mount Juliet because we're we're still doing what we set out to be doing. And it's a, it's a, some positive information on the impact that that you're starting to see here with the economy and the city turning around. And we we hope the rest of the state and the country follows follow suit. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Going to District Three, Commissioner Art Childs.
I want to thank uh City Manager Kenny Martin for finding another vehicle to go up there in front of West Wilson, turquoise truck. Um, I've had constituents comment on it and very positive. It uh, it looks great in everybody's opinion. I've had no, no one say anything negative about it. So thank you for that. I also want to tell you that um several years ago, I think it was in 2013, we started a um, a committee called BPAC, Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee. And that committee was was um devised so that we could apply for grants for the city, which we've had. The first one's coming to fruition up on Belinda Parkway. And it's taken that long, but at least we had a grant for that. I think it was a ninety-ten or it could have been an eighty-twenty. We've had so many, I can't remember which one that was. And it takes a lot of time to get that, and that's why it's so imperative that developers come in. They put their sidewalks in and they do their part for infrastructure and they put the the uh the greenways in and that kind of thing. At any rate, what we learned uh after the few, the process for a few years is that we were concerned because we had people that wanted to donate dealing with projects and they can't donate donate to the city. The organization only requires them to donate to a 501(c)(3). And that happened and we had to put money in another one to write back for a project and et cetera, et cetera. So probably about three years ago, maybe four, time goes by so quick. We started talking about a possibility of starting a 501(c)(3), for better words, called Friends of BPAC, so that we, so that that this 501(c)(3) could raise money legally to give the city of Mount Juliet for different needs. So maybe there was a a part where we need a connection with a sidewalk or we need some kind of 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 education initiative, whether it's on a greenway or whether it's on a sidewalk or whatever. And so we we started talking about this 501(c)(3). And so I'm really, really, really excited to um to announce that that is coming to fruition finally. And we had our meeting um a few days ago to uh, we have to declare who the officers are. And um, I was, I was very excited. They they chose me as the president. And um, William Anderson is the vice president and the secretary Alicia Edley and Treasurer Matt White, who's the Deputy Public Works Director. And uh, Matt Claiborne is our 501(c)(3) Incorporated Facilitator. So he will go off the board when that's uh, when when we get our status. The importance of this again is that we will be able to raise money for the city and the regional planning boundaries of our city uh into the county. And um, sometimes when we apply for grants through the BPAC, through the city, um, we are only allowed to apply for a couple or be awarded that. We and along with them, we can apply for grants as well. And this 501(c)(3), we're we're off, I mean, we're asking people if anyone's interested in the city. There were some people that couldn't be at that meeting to let us know because we'd like for you to come to a meeting. You may want to join. It will not be meeting as as often as the BPAC. But I also want to to uh to to say how proud I was of our city employees. Because when we have a city-sponsored meeting, just like you see here, they're paid, obviously, and they should be to be here. But we had two employees, the Police Department and the Public Works Department, came out and they're part of this 501(c)(3) and they don't get paid. But they see the importance of the vision and what we're going to accomplish. So I just, I just want to say thank you, staff, for for showing showing your support for the city and not being paid for it. Because you're part of the city and I really, really appreciate it. Uh, Deputy Chief Michael Mullins is on it. And as I said, uh, Matt White, he's he's our treasurer. So uh, thank you again, city. Thank you again for the citizens of this city that sees the importance of this 501(c)(3). And uh, hopefully you want to send us a donation because it goes to the city. Thank you. That that ends my comments.
All right. Thank you very much. Going to District Four, Commissioner Jennifer Malalee.
First, I want to say that um, one of our firefighters, Michael Moore and his wife Sloan, lost their little two-year-old boy by terrible accident. And I just, that was heartbreaking. I went to the funeral and it was just so difficult to sit through. So my continued thoughts and prayers are with them. Um, I sent out my June newsletter recently, last week. And if you're interested, again, I'm always pushing my newsletter because it's got a lot of good information in it. Uh, you can find it at jennifermalalee.com. Um, I held a town hall meeting on the Providence Central Development with the developer and the landowners, the engineer, and invited constituents and anyone else in the city that wanted to come. I thought it went very well and Chief Hambrick addressed some issues as well, which I'll mention in a little bit. Um, the Chamber of Converse has their weekly Zoom meetings and they invited me a week ago, Monday. So thank you for that invitation. Had another town hall on the Coffin Development with the Providence Landing residents, which you heard many of them speak on tonight. And um, got a lot of good feedback on that. And there's also some suggestions that they had as well, which I'll be bringing that up when it comes up on the agenda. And uh, since he didn't come tonight, uh, Richard DeLeby in my district wanted to give a shout out to M. Tennessee Electric over these power allergies that we've had recently and the storms. And just kudos to the electric company of their quick response and restoring power. That's all.
All right. Thank you very much. And I'll just add two quick things. One is, and I know that everyone is thrilled to know this, but I had my fifth grandchild on Wednesday of last week. So um, look, thank you very much. I'd love to put pictures up. I know you'd love to see pictures of my new grandbaby. Uh, but she is absolutely beautiful and we're thrilled just over the moon about it. And if you knew that daughter's story, you'd understand what a incredible miracle it is. Um, and and then as far as city stuff goes, I just, everyone knows about the Amazon project. We did have our uh, typically when we have a large project like that, we do a big celebration and uh announcement onsite, usually with uh, you know, hundreds of people. And of course, we can't do that. So we did that via, well, WebEx uh with the governor, Commissioner Rolfe, uh, Mayor Hutto, myself and a couple of others, some of the executives from Amazon. So that has been officially announced and that project is probably everybody that's listening knows is is under construction now. They're shooting still for uh mid to late 2021 opening over there. So that, very exciting. And with that, we will go to the city manager Kenny Martin for his report.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, everybody, for being here tonight. I thanks everybody here in the audience and from those not able to come that are watching from home. Just real quick, I'd like to give our uh, our entire city, especially our citizens first and foremost, who we serve proudly, but our elected body and our staff, some really good news, something I'm very proud of and I know everybody else is. The city of Mount Juliet was recognized out of all the cities in the state of Tennessee as the most efficient form of government or most efficient city in the state of Tennessee. So really proud of that. Uh, and also I'd like to brag a little bit, as the vice mayor said, about our sales tax numbers. And we owe that to the citizens out here that shop in our community and desire to shop locally. We all know without the businesses investing in our community, uh, we wouldn't return that blessing being sales tax. And that's how we operate our city with such a low property tax. Uh, we were really worried, of course, with the tornado and all that our community in particular has been through uh since March. And of course, we knew sales tax numbers would be drastically lower in March and April, knowing that from our finance director. Uh, but they weren't near as bad as what we had anticipated. And the blessing, uh, when you wonder sometimes just how blessed your community is, is that um, there's one thing that I bug our finance director about every month. I go to her about the 15th, if not sooner, every month and I go, have the sales tax numbers come in yet? Because it's so important and vital to our community. And uh, we got some numbers in for, I believe it's May, the way our numbers run too much in the rear. And we were anticipating they would be lower. And to those watching at home, those in the audience, any given year, if we're up 30,000 over the previous year, say for May of this year over May of last year, if we're up 30, we're excited because it's up over what you had last year. Uh, well, we did, we questioned the numbers because they were so good. So we called some other cities and found out their numbers were good as well, but not their numbers were good as well, but not quite as good of our, as ours. So, the good news that the vice mayor was talking about is that our sales tax numbers were up $435,000 over last year. And what that tells me is that not our citizens shopping locally, people outside of our community are shopping here as well. So, I just really want to thank our citizens and those that patronize our community because the reason they patronize it is first and foremost, they feel safe. And that comes at the direction of the Board of Commissioners because safety is paramount in our community. So, thanks to our police and fire. And they feel cut out here. And as the mayor, I know that you like to say that it's a great place to work. I'll let you finish.
Live, workshop, play, worship.
Exactly right. And I think a lot of people are doing that. So, thank you to everybody that's here tonight for investing in our community. Thanks for supporting our local businesses. And we'll continue to see good things in our community if we continue to do that even through this pandemic, these tough times. So, I just want to say thank you, everybody, and just ask that you continue doing that because as the lady mentioned earlier from Katz, you talk about those employees and the people that are needing to work and take care of their families and those other necessary bills. It's the same for the city and all our other businesses here. So, thank you so much for supporting them and keep up the good work. And Mayor, that concludes my report.
Very good. All right. With that, we will start the business portion of our agenda. All of the elected official microphones are going to be on. We do not have anything on our consent agenda for unfinished business. So, we'll go directly to Section Nine, 9.1, An Ordinance to Amend the Planned Unit Development, known as the Providence Central, being located in the area of Adams Lane, Central Pike and Providence Parkway, MAP 096, parcel 002 and MAP 97, parcels 23, 2401, 25, 75, 7502, 7504 and 7505 in Wilson County, Tennessee. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions, comments from the commission?
I have a motion and two questions and a statement.
Okay.
Go there. All right. I will go ahead and make the motion first to add to the amendment. It's my understanding, it's my understanding, the applicant has agreed and would, and it would be issued, talking about, for their consideration for a voluntary contribution of $2,500 for each single family home. If another developer is involved at that time for a single family, I would ask the planning, public works to make the same voluntary request from them at that time. And it's my understanding that the applicant has agreed to this and it would be issued with each building permit applied for to their consideration for a voluntary contribution of $1,000 per apartment unit to be earmarked for off-site road improvements, signal modifications, sidewalks within District Four. This would include a proposed sidewalk in front of or near Goodwill and crossings lane if the city, if and when the city decides to build that. It is my understanding, the applicant has agreed and it would be issued with each building permit applied for. Three, install a fence behind Creekside Apartment property along the property line of Mr. Barry Graves unless Creekside property owners give permission to install within an easement on their property or if Mr. Graves were to approve a small easement on his property. The fence would be to the specifications to match the fence around the new apartment complex next to Creekside or to match any existing fence around Creekside as per planning and public works specifications. I don't have a timeframe on that. And so, I would like to ask at any certain point, any suggestions on when to implement, implement that. I would request that it be done prior to occupancy of the apartments, but I also wanted to get feedback on that as well. So, I'll go ahead and mention four, the fourth one, while I'm at it. Install attached garages to three of the apartment buildings located on the southeast corner of the complex and on the two on the south side. Design would comply with planning and public works specifications.
Okay.
Those are my four points of the motion.
That's all in a single?
But I would like to get feedback on the timeframe of the fence on Mr. Graves.
That's all in a single motion?
Yeah.
Okay. Any second on that motion?
I'll second.
Questions or comments on the amendment?
Jennifer, I, I got attached garages, the fence, the improvements, which, what am I missing on my?
The $2,500 per single family home.
Okay.
The $1,000 per apartment unit to be designated within District Four for earmarked for off-site road improvements, signal modifications, sidewalks, and which would include a proposed sidewalk in front of or near Goodwill and crossings lane if the, if and when the city decides to build.
So, the first was 2,500, the 1,000, the garages and the fence. Did I catch it off?
Right. Those are the four.
One, one suggestion or thought I, I had on this was, you said within District Four. I think, I think we might want to clarify District Four is its drawn right now because next year's potential for redistricting, this project might not even be in District Four potentially.
That's true. That's a good point.
All right. I might suggest within a mile or two miles of this project and within District Four as it lays currently.
I think if, if you don't say the one or two mile thing, you're going to hear from the attorney because there needs to be a nexus with the improvement required in the project. So, you're going to have to disregard the District Four designation and put some designation that's nearer to the project. What would you recommend, Gino?
If you could specify the specific locations where the improvements are going to be, whatever staff has recommended for the 2,500 and 1,000 to be used. So, you have that nexus for this impact fee, for lack of a better.
I don't know that staff's evaluated that yet, but is there just a way to make it a broader two miles from the, within?
Maybe within two miles. That, I think that's a good, good number for what'll be impacted, the area they'll be impacted by these.
Are you okay with that, within two, two mile radius of the, of the project as determined by Public Works?
That's, that's good.
Okay. Other comments?
And on the timeline of the fence, any suggestions?
I mean, you, the folks that are replying right now have one project really that's an active project. So, you, you're probably better tie it to that.
Okay.
Otherwise, it may be, who knows, 10 years. I don't know.
I would like to see it put in, in, placed in place and completed prior to occupancy on the apartments. Is that possible? Okay.
All right. Other questions or comments on the amendment? All in favor of the amendment? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Did you have something else?
I was, I was gonna ask about the, the garages.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought y'all were ready to go.
I was raising my hand, but we were already aye, so it got counted as a nai vote. But I think, I think the.
Zoom meeting.
I think, I think the will of the bodies on there, but I, I did want to hear from the occupant on the garages. Because I'm curious, you, you put a number on that?
Three buildings.
Three. And have you identified which three or?
Yeah. One is located on the southeast corner and the other two are on the south side.
Oh, okay. I'm still here on the map.
Thank you. That's, change your vote in any way or you just needed the information?
I just wanted to know what we're talking about.
All right. Other questions or comments? Commissioner Justice?
We received an email and it was referencing, I think, one of your requests in regard to the completion of the bridge widening on South Mandrake Road. And I think if they were, the, the comment was December 2021, being, they, we had said that they, nothing, no COs until the bridge widened. And they said that they wanted to add or December 21 into that.
Yeah. I'm not agreeable to that.
Okay. I want to make sure that, that was something that wasn't going to come up later because I'm not either.
We, I mean, we got to capture a vote on it, but.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll take, I'll be glad to take that on unless somebody has other questions or comments at this time.
Now, my motion's got, that was voted on, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Your amendment's captured.
Yeah, mine's done.
Yeah.
Okay. So, it's just an open floor. I just had a statement, two questions actually. Was it decided where the construction entrance would be on the Providence Central?
Mayor.
Joe or Mike?
I have about eight different things here.
The construction entrance, was it decided where the construction entrance was?
To. Is that where, sorry, I'll. Turns to which portion? You know, we've got 250 acres that'll be developed over time specifically.
Well, first phase would be the apartments and the office pad, basically.
Correct.
So, where would the construction entrance be?
Well, it'll be entering both Central Pike and the current terminus of Providence Parkway.
Okay. All right. The, and I say this in reference to Amazon. Amazon was allowed to work seven days a week and I would not like this variance granted for seven days a week, that it, it would apply within the certain hours of each day and not work on Sundays. Does it, does that need to be a motion?
Well, that's within the city manager's control.
Okay.
And he's the one that authorized that at Amazon. I don't disagree with what you did at Amazon, but I would certainly support this request. But what is your feeling on that?
The urgency as much as what we had with Amazon, they had the 18-month time period. So, that wouldn't be a problem at all.
Okay.
Anything else?
All right. And I just have a statement to make. I want to, I'm going to vote for this passing of the second reading and I feel like I have to justify my vote. And I just wanted to make a statement for that. I honestly tried to find reasons not to vote for this project. There were three actually. One is the apartments, two is the traffic and three was, is fear. But I have 28 reasons to vote for the project. And I would like to spell them out because I would like my constituents to know my justification for supporting this project. Granted, there would be a period of time for the traffic hurdle and there would always be pros and cons of every development. There are police calls in our apartment complexes, no doubt. But as Chief Hambrick explained at the town hall meeting, the stats are not higher than single-family neighborhoods. Many are actually are lower. The, I don't think it's fair to base a vote on a 200-plus acre development on 20 acres, which is the apartments. I, actually, I do have another, before I go there, I do have another question. And this is in reference to the Winfield development and the Harrington development on, off Central Pike and what we're seeing after the fact now with that development. So, for the developer, I would like to ask and the engineer, what is put in place to avoid those overrun areas of the water? What is put in place to avoid situations like we're seeing now on Central Pike where flooding is going across Central Pike onto homes in the county, you know, flooding their homes and yard? So, I do have that question before I go any further, if somebody could address that.
Do we have city staff here? Public Works, Engineering? That's, that's who we need to answer that question. All right. That's who we need.
Sue.
No offense, Joe, but you have a, you, you work for the.
Hello? Yes, to answer the question on the runoff. So, a lot of what we have seen here recently has been a result of some very heavy rains. But for each development, the elements that go into place to try to prevent those types of situations are various types of sediment control, erosion prevention type measures. And so, this development would have basically drains sort of to the central point on this side, on the, on the east side of Central Pike. And in that area, they would have all the appropriate erosion control and sediment control measures. They would likely have a pond, I can take this down. They would likely have a pond in the area near the creek. But I have to confirm with their engineer on that. But as part of that pond, that would help to prevent a lot of the runoff issues that we've seen here recently. So, that would come through as it goes through development. We go through the calculations with the engineer on that. We've confirmed that. Basically, the runoff after they develop has to be at or lower what the runoff is from pre-development conditions. That's where ordinance is written for stormwater.
Okay. So, you feel that the proper steps are put in place prior to this development to avoid seeing what we're seeing on Central Pike?
Yes, yes. And, you know, I think what we've seen here recently is a result of, is a combination of where those developments were with a lot of area that's exposed in construction and then also some very, very heavy microburst storms that we did have. So, just a bad sequence of events there. But with our department, what we try to ensure is that every measure's in place, everything's working properly. Sometimes we see things that don't work properly. And so, it's a matter of trying to correct those. So, yeah, we will, in, in every single development, we're, we're striving to try to make sure that those, if they're not functioning correctly, we try to correct those or have them corrected, shall I say.
Okay. I just would like to avoid that if.
Yes.
If at all possible.
Yep.
All right. I'll just continue. For my 28 reasons to support the project, one is vision, vision for Mount Juliet's future. Thousands of jobs, which is a major advantage, at $8 million roads, infrastructure system first, major advantage. Two to $3 million worth of right-of-ways for the city in TDOT, which is a major advantage. Class A office, white collar jobs, major advantage. Mount Juliet needs. No expense to the taxpayer on this infrastructure, major advantage. Apartments bring in 40% more property tax revenue for the city than single-family homes. This is a major advantage. Property tax funds are far department, major advantage. Long-term traffic relief off South Mount Juliet Road, major advantage. The apartments would not be allowed occupancy until the I-40 Mount Juliet Road widening project is complete. There was a date mentioned, but that has yet to be voted on, one way or the other. The apartments would not be allowed occupancy until Providence Parkway is complete. So, they have to build that road out first. I do understand that the apartments are revenue source for the developer to fund the roads. If Providence Central doesn't pass, the approved PUD from 2013 would once again stall. This developer who was hired last year by the landowners would not be able to implement what is proposed without those apartments in this amendment. Hotels would not break ground, it's my understanding, for at least two years. The developer had estimate in a meeting that we had prior, he, he estimated out, estimated out three years, but I think an agreement was reached for two years. Currently, our residents were traveling to Nashville and Franklin for these types of jobs, including Commissioner Vice Mayor Manus. Developers in general want to build here. If we don't get them, they will go to the 109 exit, Hartman and Lebanon exits. We're, and we're closest to the airport and, which is to our advantage. If we pass on these kinds of developments, Mount Juliet gets nothing except traffic. This happened to Brentwood when Franklin built out. Brentwood passed and got nothing but traffic with no traffic relief. I don't want Mount Juliet to be another Brentwood. I believe Providence Central is the right kind of development that would bring in big box retail and high-end restaurants that we have so many requests for. I do believe and hope that Providence Central would help to bring the I-40 Central Pike interchange closer in sight. That's always iffy, but it is my hope. TDOT did submit a letter to that addressed that. I believe TDOT would view this, if it passes, as a priority for Mount Juliet and that we are serious about getting the interchange. we are serious about getting the interchange versus not passing it and then viewing that as a lack of priority on Mount Juliet's part. If we don't show a priority for it, why would TDOT? Timeline of the project, five to seven-plus years for completion, so everything wouldn't be built all at once. The apartments would be complete 18 to 24 months, so the traffic burden would be in phases, not all at once. If the, if Providence Central doesn't pass, there is no traffic relief plan in place. The city, then, would have the burden of building a road years and years down the road. It would be at the expense of the taxpayer, which would cost millions. I don't believe Mount Juliet's apartment complexes will turn into Antioch, which is a big fear. I have learned that our standards and codes and zonings would keep the standards too high for that. I do know that is a big concern. And Chief Hambrick addressed this, again, at, at the town hall meeting, and he gave stats that showed otherwise. Just because the visual plan has several hotels doesn't mean that they would all be built. It would be driven by demand, as would offices and retail. I have 6,300 registered voters in my district. I truly wish I could talk to each one, but that's just not possible. So, of those I've had contact with, my result is 60% for, 30 against, and 10% on the fence. I have a list, which I've already made a motion for, and it got approved. And the bottom line, and I saved it for last because it's the bottom line, and that is leadership. I have two choices. I can vote no, because we don't want more apartments, because we don't want more traffic, because I fear that it might cost me the election. It's a risky vote. If I vote no, we get no benefit, so we sit on the ball. My final decision is based on leadership to get to the long-term goal. I made the choice to support this amendment because I feel like, as a leader, I have to look at the future vision of the city and what's best in the long run by moving the ball down the field. I would rather risk the election, and I truly hope I wouldn't lose over it, rather than vote no out of fear over losing the election. We have so many politicians whose votes are based on staying in office rather than making those hard decisions of what is in the best interest of their city, county, state, or country. I don't want to be one of those people. I have to have a piece that I made the right choice rather than look back in regret, and I feel like if I vote, not voted no, I think I would do, because it would be based on fear, and I would look back in regret. So, I hope that makes sense, that it's my justification for supporting this project, and I speak from the heart. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
May I, real quick?
You want to go first?
Yes, please.
All right, go ahead.
First of all, thank you for the state of the city address that was retaining. I'm, I'm going to answer your 28 reasons with one statement, and that is, when you ignore the history, or you don't know the history, you're doomed to repeat it. Okay? Providence was created, like, beginning in 2000, and there were a lot of missteps that were made. And I think we're seeing where we've been able to fix these incrementally. What we're about to do is the exact same thing over again. We're about to put the cart before the horse. We're going to start building roads to two-lane roads that can't, that are 35 mile-an-hour speeds of. Okay, there's a reason for a 35 mile-an-hour speed zone. It means that the, the traffic is not safe for traffic to be on that road, and we're going to try and divert traffic off of Mountain Juliet Road onto a 35 mile-an-hour state road. We have TDOT says if they're going to be able to do this in the next four or five years, we know that that's not true. They're talking about a $15 million investment into the interchange, and then another $65 million investment on a two-lane road that is not going to be built anytime in the near future. So, we're talking 10 years down the road that we're going to be putting additional traffic on a road that is not designed for any traffic, let alone additional traffic. We have to take this stuff into consideration. It's called safety, and that is the primary reason for a government to exist, is to protect citizens, and we're ignoring that. So, there's a lot of ignoring going on, and, and to get a road built. I understand the gentleman's, the developers' reasons for wanting to do the apartments over there. Wanted to do apartments down in my district here a couple of years ago, I think it was, and by the same developer, if I'm not mistaken, it was. And I'm sold on him. He's a great guy. I know the man, quality individual. I have all the faith in the world, and I'm not saying no. What I'm asking for is just not now. We are not in a position, there is no master plan available. I've talked to three other landowners out there, they've had no contact from TDOT, they've had no contact from developers, they've had no contact with City of Mount Juliet in any kind of progressive manner as to what's going to happen at those locations. So, we have no master plan. Without a master plan, we have no vision. Now, we need to establish that vision and not go out here and just harry 'em, scare 'em, throw crap at the wall, see what's going to stick, and, and then think it's a good way of development. We learned through development, Providence, that that was not the way to go. Now, we've got flooding that is taking place over in three or four developments over on the south side in your district, over there, you're learning about that now as we go. Do we really want to add to right now, without that being stabilized? Without that whole problem being taken care of? Do we really want to add to what was the problems that we've already got in that area? So, I've got several things here that I wanted to, to add, and I don't think, matter of fact, I've even talked to Mr. Murphy about some of these. The final one, he's probably not going to be tickled about, but I'm going to. Under number two of the staff's recommendations, Mayor, where it says improvements to Central Pike shall be completed by the 310th Certificate of Occupancy for Development in Area E. And that one, I want to say that the road would be completed prior to the first CEO.
Okay, is that a motion?
Yes, sir.
I'll second. Questions or comments from the commission on that?
Where were you, where were you getting that on? Was that the, the response letter?
That was out of the staff recommendations. Andy?
That's a good point. That specific requirement is actually located in two places. What you referenced, I believe, is out of planning and zoning's comments. If you go into the public works comments, we actually do state the prior to the first CEO that is in there. So, I think it's a matter of consistency that it's the same in both places that basically we stated.
So, we would change that in both locations? Is that what you're saying?
Well, we'd only have to change one location, what you stated, and, and it would be consistent across our different departments of what we saw.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay. Other questions or comments on that? All in favor of that, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That amendment passes unanimously. Go ahead, Commissioner.
The, it says preserve all perimeter trees to utilize for buffers. Supplemental plantings may be utilized, and I think I was looking at that, it is a Class D buffer, is that correct? What I would like to do is add to that the, this would be completed screening so that we're actually doing trees, a Class D buffer with the perimeter trees in addition to the Class D buffer.
Let me, that sounds like a planner issue. Let me get her. Is she, is, can she hear us?
And if I'm not mistaken, I think that Class D buffer is going to be a 30-foot buffer, is that correct? So, what I'm looking at has been a total of 40 feet.
Did you hear that? Did you hear?
I have way, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead, Commissioner, say that again.
What I'm talking about, Sam, is the, the Class D buffer that is proposed, and says preserve all perimeter trees utilized for buffers, supplemental plantings may be utilized. What I'd like to ask is that we do a Class D buffer in addition to a 10-foot screening using the additional, I mean, the, the existing trees.
Okay.
So, there's actually, it would have been a 40-foot total buffer.
Okay.
City planner, is that something that's doable on that plan?
I believe they can make it work with their plan.
Okay.
If it's the condition.
Questions or comments from the commission?
I'd like to hear from the developer.
I'd also want to mention, if this does get approved tonight, please include the, can you hear me? Please include the variances if they're approved. Don't forget to list those variances that they've asked for. Thank you.
Don't go too far away.
I'm going to sit right here.
All right.
Yes, with respect to the 10-foot plus the 30, we're in agreement with that.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? All in favor of that amendment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Commissioner? Justice?
Yes, sir. The, under number 10 in that particular section, the developer has agreed to dedicate all necessary right-of-way for the Central Pike interchange roadway widening. Here's my issue with this, and I'm not sure how we fix it. Mayor, you've spent a lot of time doing the planning commission stuff, you might be able to help, but the, they don't own the property, and what I'm asking here is that, that they have absolute control over the property, designate the minimums and control of those right-of-ways that they're offering. It's, I mean, seven and a half acres, I think, is what you'd ask for, if I'm not mistaken. But if they don't own the right-of-way, don't have control of the right-of-way, then it's not theirs necessarily to designate.
Yep. I, I mean, I'll, I'll be happy to address mine later, but I'm not sure where you're going right now.
Well, I'm just trying to figure out how that they can guarantee us they're going to give us right-of-way when TDOT doesn't even have a designated plan. They've got two plans, actually, and neither one of those are confirmed, and the design guidelines in stone on them.
Well, that, that's actually been part of the controversy, is how to designate that, but I think I'm, I mean, I think I have a way forward, but...
If you do have a way forward, I'll just leave that one with you, and we'll address it later. And finally, any design plans, this is something that I've found from talking to folks at West Wilson Utility District. We get a lot of the plans in here, and I think Andy may be able to clarify this. We have an issue a lot of times when they bring in plans, and they have sewer and the utilities laid out, but they have not consulted or gotten approved plans from West Wilson Utility District. And I don't know why we would wait for that to happen after the city's approved something, when that should be in the immediate, before, prior to approval.
Okay.
On, on the utility approval, and I was speaking for West Wilson, I don't want to speak directly for them, but I know of their process. They do get the packet. Of course, we're not going to get into final design for utilities for us, sewer for them, for water. We don't get into that until we get, we're in PMDP stage right now. It'll be Final Master Development Plan stage, which will be the follow-up process to this to go to the planning commission. At that time, we'll really get a, a fine-tuned idea for the water and sewer and all the utility layouts, and how that would happen.
I see a very large man standing up behind you, so I think he wants to address that.
Quickly add, Andy's absolutely right. We have met with West Wilson on this project. We've also met with Labelled Utility District about this project. Most of you all know that the, the service area splits all of Central Pike all the way down, 200 feet north, West Wilson's district, Central Pike south, Labelled's district. So, we're working with both of them. West Wilson should serve everything east of Central Pike, with Labelled picking it up to the west.
Commissioner, does that satisfy that, or do you need to do more with that? Commissioner Justice, does that satisfy that?
Yes, sir.
Anything else?
I'm going to put this out there, and I'm not sure how it's going to be received. I've put a lot of reasons out, and, and the history being very important, as I said, and, and our, the fact that we're probably about to, if we're not careful, repeat some of our past mess-ups. Yeah, I don't think there's been any kind of an economic impact study that's been done on the entire area. I know for a fact there's not been a master plan that's been developed for the entire location. I know that TDOT, while they put letters out, that was loud, they put letters out saying, you know, they were going to do this stuff, and I have seen those letters before, but I'll repeat the fact that while they're talking about getting something done in four years, an interchange and working on the construction for the, the $65 million improvement package for Central Pike, I haven't been able to get four tenths of a mile on Lebanon Road widened. So, if you think TDOT's got any credibility with me, you're completely mistaken. So, given the reasons that I've given you, I think probably the best thing we could do until we have that economic impact study, until we've got some guarantees from TDOT, until we've got the, the master plan that is designed for that, the local, that entire interchange, I think right now would be a really good time to defer this until those things are in our grubby little paws.
I'm not going to defend TDOT, but I don't know anybody else to go to. Who else do we contact?
I don't know.
They're the only, only game in town.
I, I think the problem that I've got is, at this point, TDOT has told us so many things, and those things were, and I'm just going to call them mistaken, that I don't have, like I said, I don't, I don't, there's no credibility there.
Oh, well, let me go ahead, and I've got a couple of things that I'd like to...
And I've got something, too.
Lock in. We'll see how these votes fall, but my first amendment is that there would be no certificate of occupancies issued on the apartment complex until the bridge widening project that is due to bid very shortly is complete and open to traffic. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Okay. Second by Commissioner Giles. Questions or comments on that?
I'd like to hear from the developer. I've asked about that, too, and I think, think they can explain the reasoning better.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's a problem, because all of this will be for naught if, if I go to a lender and request the kind of money that it's going to take to build this community, and we don't know a date certain that we can start leasing. So, I understand the concern, and if there's any room for perhaps, you know, adjusting that or doing a ramp up, you know, as, as you know, we'll develop the community, and it takes a long time to do the infrastructure and that sort of thing. Would anticipate in about 10 months that we deliver the first building, that would have 50 units in it, so that's not a huge impact even initially. If there's any way that we can kind of ramp that up and say, maybe not more than, you know, 100 units within, you know, by January, you know, extend those dates out, but, but just having it open-ended is, is really going to be problematic.
Let me get the city engineer back.
Okay.
When is that, when is the bridge widening project going to bid?
I believe we are scheduled for the August TDOT letting, and that would put them starting construction about 60 days out, and we've been told the construction timeline is roughly 14 months.
Okay, so do that math for me. Where's that, where's that put us?
That's going to put you right at the end of December of next year.
Okay.
So...
When would the, this is a preliminary master development plan, when would the final master development plan come back?
Well, that's up to their engineer. Joe, what's your schedule?
September.
September, probably looking for grading, grading permit, I would say probably October, November, or something like that.
So, there, there would be clarity on that point before you get to that, to where you got to spend some money, and I think then you could determine if you want to move forward with the project or not. If, if the TDOT is going to do as Commissioner Justice alluded, and not come through for us, then you would have time to back up.
One thing, may I mention on that? I know that you said complete and open to traffic. There's a few different stages we could discuss in there. I think probably everyone's concern is traffic concerns and the capacity upgrades that that project will bring. I know that we have a lot of elements of that project that are what I would call a beautification-type element, but then, that would be outside of the capacity upgrades. Those could be lingering past the timeframe for when the actual roadway lanes are open to traffic. We could say something when the substantially complete or something to that matter, which would identify that those traffic lanes are actually open to traffic and we have increased traffic capacity from the project.
I think the issue is open to traffic and usable, drivable. If there was some decorative thing, it's landscaping that needed to be done that didn't affect traffic flow, unless they're going to close the lanes.
Sure.
That would be a problem.
Yep.
But if it's just some landscaping project or something that, and traffic is flowing in all directions in all lanes, I think it satisfies the requirement.
Sounds good. And we're on the same page. Sounds good. And we're on the same page.
If you, I mean, I'm not gonna negotiate on the point, so, I mean, that's my motion, and I'm voting for it, so, I mean, but go ahead.
I would, I would just, you know, it's, it's, to get to that point, I mean, I heard what you're, you laid out, we can make that decision, but in order to get into the position of breaking ground on the road and on the apartments, there's substantial design, and what we've been alluding to here, that, you know, millions of dollars' worth of, of design time. So, that's, yeah, that is, it's, but it, but it addresses the whole purpose of getting the road started as soon as possible, and if there was any way of just putting, even adding another three months out there, just to, to add to Mr. Barlow's timeframe, to give a buffer, but yet it would, it would satisfy a lender, that, but anyway.
Well, let me ask the city engineer another question, then. Let me ask Andy.
Okay.
You said it was part of the August bid letting.
Yes.
Is there a firm date on that letting? What is the date?
I can confirm that for you, if you give me just a minute.
Anybody have any comments on this motion? While he's looking that up?
No, I think they're actually making their point. I don't think anybody out here trusts TDOT. It doesn't sound like... Well, it's a fact.
August 14th is the date.
14?
August 14th.
So, essentially, three weeks.
That's correct.
From today.
Would you consider extending the date three months?
The date of what?
December, instead of December, to, say, March?
There's no, I'm not specifying any date. I'm saying when the bridge is open to traffic.
Right, but I was just asking your feedback.
No, I'm just saying the bridge is open to traffic. And it may not, this vote may not prevail. I don't know. Anybody else?
It sounds, it sounds like passing of this amendment effectively shuts the project down.
I think that's what they would like for us to believe.
It may not, but...
Okay. All in favor of that amendment? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Dis opposed? Amendment number four passes four to one. The next one that I have is regarding the roadway, the new roadway being complete all the way through Central Pike. I think you all have agreed to that anyway, but I'm gonna go ahead and make that motion and lock that in. So, this is referring to the new road that would be extending Providence Parkway all the way to Central Pike, and it would be open and complete prior to, prior to any COs being issued. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
Just a question is, is, do we have the right-of-way on all of that, or does that need to be locked in?
Let me ask the city engineer.
Are you talking about the right-of-way for Providence Parkway?
To Central Pike.
To Central Pike, yes. That is all wholly contained within the development control.
I'm sorry, I've got the wrong road on my mind.
All right.
Forgive me. We're good. Yes.
All right.
Any other comments? All in favor of that one? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
No.
Okay. That one passes four to one. The other one that I had mentioned at our last meeting referenced the office pad being ready, and you all have agreed to that with sites, site utilities in place. I do feel like I misstated that a little bit. That needed to cover not only the pad for the building, but also the parking that would be affiliated with that. Otherwise, it doesn't really move the ball forward. So, just need a nod of the head if that's what you intended also, was the pad for the building plus the parking prep. No, this would be for an office, Class A office building. Not paving, but the pad is site, buildable-ready, including the parking area. That was what was intended. I don't know that I said it that way. Let's just go ahead and lock that in, so it's on the record. So, my amendment is that the, that in addition to the approval that we're giving them for the entire project, and for the apartment complex, there would also be a Class A office site that was pad-ready for the structure and for the parking lot. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Okay. Questions or comments on that one? All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? That one is unanimous. And then, that included utilities, too. And then the last one is gonna be probably a very difficult one, and that is, my motion is that the right-of-way for the new interstate interchange that is affected on these applicant's property be donated and be in writing. We did get a letter. It is unclear as to exactly where that property would be. I understand that dilemma, but I think you also understand my dilemma, is that we can't, four years from now, we can't be saying, hey, we need to buy another acre of land from the Providence Central PUD, and it be valued at a million dollar. We can't do that. So, my motion is that all right-of-way needed for the interstate interchange is to be donated in order to build that interchange. And I, it's, I'm sorry, it's not, it can't be clearly defined, but I think we're reasonable. We'll work with you in good faith on it. I don't think TDOT's gonna come in and say, guess what, I want the whole 200 acres. I don't think that's gonna happen. But they're also not, probably aren't gonna come in and say, I want these seven acres that you identified. And so, I mean, that's locked, I mean, I can't, I can't do, I can't leave here in November, and a future commission have to be stuck eyeing right-of-way for that project. That's my motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments on that one?
Question. You're talking about the land, from the land they own?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. They've identified seven acres that they were willing to donate. We have two designs from TDOT. One design would require more than seven acres, one would probably require the seven. Questions or comments on that?
Yes, sir. I can appreciate what you're trying to do. Once again, we've got four quadrants that are actually are affected over there, and we're only talking about one quadrant. There is no plan laid out that actually affects the other three that we've talked to, or anyone else has talked to. There is no master plan, there is no way forward on this. So, without having gone over there, talked to the Tillmans, and talked to the Nelsons, and, you know, to the others in there, I don't know that we're, I don't, I don't think we're accomplishing what we need to accomplish.
Well, we're getting the right-of-way that's affected on this...
On that side.
...parcel. If one of those parties that you mentioned were in here for a preliminary master development plan approval, I would hope a future commission would ask the same question that I'm asking of these folks. But we don't have that opportunity right now.
Well, I'm thinking we could gain that opportunity if we put, move this farther down the road, and we go ahead and ask that economic impact study. We ask for all the studies associated with the property, and we ask somebody to come in with a master plan, whether it's us, based on what our future land use is, or what it may be. And because of that, I'm gonna go ahead, if I can, and go ahead and make a, well, just get this out of the way first, and then...
Yeah, 'cause I want to ask something.
All right. Something related to that amendment?
No.
Okay. Other questions or comments on this amendment regarding the right-of-way?
Any suggestions from the attorney on locking this down?
I don't know what kind of number that's going to be.
Gotcha.
Sister Hardwood. Okay. All in favor of the amendment number seven regarding the right-of-way? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
No.
That passes four to one. Okay?
Understood. Please, if I can clarify that?
Yes, sir.
I'm not against what you're posing. I think it's great. My problem is, I, it's not, there's no way of putting that in concrete.
And it doesn't go far enough for you.
No, sir.
I understand. And I wish you could go further. Like I say, if those applicants were here, we'd be asking the same question. Commissioner Giles?
A few years ago, before I was on this, on this board, there was a development on the north side of town, and it was dealing with a graveyard, and it was dealing with development. And I went and I, I looked at the graves there. And this body, although I wasn't a part of it, voted one way, and for some reason, somehow, they moved that cemetery. And it wasn't in, in...
And there wasn't, it wasn't known to this board. So, if you look at the history of anything, we've always tried to bring up, we always would ask for fences around where cemeteries are, or I think we had something in your area, Ray, that came up not long ago, where they were gonna build those lots on the lake over there, and there was, there was, I think that there was a rumor that there could have been some, some unmarked graves there, if you remember that, and I think they verified that there wasn't. This
letter that came, I think Sheila sent this to us in an email earlier today, where Mr. Smart, this, this Don Smart, had sent this. I think it's very, very important, and I'm reading what he said, not what Art says, but what he said, or he says in here, that there could be some unmarked graves, probably Indians and slaves. Okay, that's his, that's what he's saying, not me. And I think that this is very important, and, and years ago, when, when that happened, I came down here to speak, and there were so many people here that I could not speak. I was outside in, in this lobby, and never was able to come in here and speak about why I was disappointed that this development was gonna go forward at that time. Since that time, that development was, was, was done, and it is believed by some of us, and I, and I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna put the development down, I'm not trying to lose business, so I don't talk about it. But there is not a day that I don't go, I live on the north side, there is not a day that I don't either walk or drive, if I go further north, and I see where I'm talking about, that I think about that. And during that time, the research that I did, I think it's called an anthropologist that is supposed to identify and sift the soil in areas that could be, like this, this gentleman said, slaves or, or Native Americans, and you sure don't want to run into a problem with, with the Native Americans. Now, that may have been done, but I think that it is merit for that to be done, if not. I think that identification of that is very, very important. I deal with churches, as most of you know. One of the coverages that we have is cemetery liability for a church that has a cemetery, because sometimes they exhume a grave, and, and they didn't, they thought that nobody was, was there. And if I'm not mistaken, in the state of Tennessee, and I might be wrong, that if a grave is older than, than 1927 or 37, then in order to identify that, an anthropologist has to be brought in to truly do that. So, I'm concerned about this letter, about what he says, because if there's graves there, you need to identify, just like the, the property out in your area. You know where I'm talking about. And I think that this, this is important, and I think this is part of our history. We were talking about his, you were talking about history. And, and, you know, one of my relatives was buried yesterday, and I stood up there on the hill and looked out at a Native American museum. Well, it was, you couldn't hardly see it with the trees, but it's just over, just four, like, almost as close as Hill Street to here. Well, a little further than that. And, and, you know, these things are important. That property is there, and that, that's Native American over there. And so, I think that this, this, Don Smart has made a good point, and I think that, that we need to look into that.
What are you wanting, with the fence?
Absolutely. They need to identify if there's any, if there's any graves there.
Let's see what the staff has to say on that point. Jennifer?
Any construction, then they'll have to cease immediately, call the state archaeologists, they come out, find out who, what, where, when, and how. This happens all the time. And unless Mr. Smart, I'm just saying it's, in my opinion, an undue burden on the developer to say, go out and survey three or four acres, however long it is, to look for graves, which will be nigh impossible to do. But if they discover graves, if there's a cemetery, I understand there that they know there are graves that are marked, that'll be marked off, and then if, and construction continues, then it hap, it happens all the time, and I've represented developers where they're building, where they didn't think anything was, and they hit, see human remains, they stop, they come out, you have to go to Chancery Court to get permission, you move those graves to another, those remains, rather, to another site. So, that's what would happen, if there's concern about destroying graves, that, that won't happen.
But we have an area identified there, is that correct? That is a cemetery?
Right, and that's gonna be, I'll let them speak, but my understanding is...
Okay, and if I may continue on this, and you can speak, but a lot of cemeteries, and I'm thinking about East Tennessee, and also where my, my, my real dad is buried, on one end of that cemetery that you can't see are a slave's graves, okay, and, and nobody knows, but yet they don't bother them. And so, if we have an area that we know is a cemetery, we need to define where, that there are possibility that would probably be around there.
Yeah, absolutely, and that, and that's state law. That requires that. I thought you were saying, if somebody says, I think there's some graves over there, that they go...
No, I think he said there was a cemetery, if I'm not, if I read this right. And although this, this, this print is so small on this, I don't see it, but at any rate, so...
Comments are well taken. As Mr. Marquetti said, the law in Tennessee is very clear about cemeteries. Unfortunately, it now covers all cemeteries, whether it's Caucasian, Native American slaves. There was a time until about 15 years ago, where Native American graves were treated totally differently. That's now changed by statute. They're all treated the exact same way. If you know there's a cemetery on a piece of property, and we know there's a cemetery here, the good thing here is that Mr. Phil Smart's part of the same family. He's kept up that cemetery for 30 years. In order to basically get involved, what you do is you find out where the grave site is right now. We all know where it is. We're putting a fence around it 10 feet further than what the boundary is, with the gate to it. That's what the law requires. That's gonna be done in this specific case. If you run into anything whatsoever of any type that looks like a human remains, as Mr. Marquetti said, you go to the state archaeologist. It used to be a gentleman by the name of Nick Fielder, I did this many times. I don't know who does that right now. They come out and look at, you stop immediately, you can't do any transfer, disinter and reinter without an order of Chancery Court. You've gotta go in, and you've gotta actually show the area is not kept with reverence for the deceased. If that's not the case, it's being kept up in this case. So, you know exactly where the cemetery is. Mr. Smart has kept it up for 30 years. We know where they are, we're gonna round it with a 10-foot perimeter fencing around it, so we're doing everything that's legally required, and frankly, more than what's legally required because of the sensitivity of Mr. Phil Smart to this family property.
So, the 10 feet, the 10 feet is out from where known graves are, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so how close is the building gonna be, any kind of excavation up to that fence?
It's, it's gonna be, I'm not positive I can answer how close that is. I know that the fence is to be 10 feet out from the closest to the grave that we can find. As far as the building proximity, I don't know that. It's, it's so far down the road, we don't even have a plan for that. It's not on this apartment site. But all I can tell you is that the fencing itself, the perimeter, will be 10 feet from the closest to the grave that it is. And that's what's, more than what's required legally, but I, if you're saying to me, how close is a potential building to that fence that's gonna go, I honestly can't answer that.
Yes, sir.
The email, Mr. White?
I'm sorry.
The email is from Don Smart.
Correct.
Okay, and that is a relative of Mr. Phil Smart.
That's my understanding.
Okay. I'm, I'm curious, does Mr. Don Smart have a interest in the Providence Central property as well?
I honestly don't know the answer to that. All I know is that the cemetery is what it is, and we're going to do what's legally required. But as far as-
Well, he makes it, I'm, I'm sorry, don't interrupt you just a second. He makes a comment in here that says that he was wanting to call our attention to Note 3, Sheet C108 of the originally approved plan. And it said there was a copy attached. I don't see the copy. It says, "To his knowledge, none of the actions addressed in Note 3 have yet occurred." Now, I don't have access to Note 3, and I haven't looked that up. If somebody could speak to that, I'd like to know what Note 3 is, and-
Are you moving again? The note, it is now Note 2 on C108. We kept the note from the original PUD. It says, "Prior to the development of parcel E, the boundary of the cemetery shall be determined by a qualified professional in a field survey defined by state planning coordinates. This area shall be incorporated into any future development plans for this parcel as follows. Identify on the plans, fence around the perimeter of the cemetery, including an additional buffer area. Provision of convenient and acceptable access to the site, appropriate easements and/or agreements for the maintenance of the site and access there too." Which is in, of course, what Mr. White just described as state law. So very similar situation to what y'all probably remember we, we've seen here recently. I just looked to answer the previous question, grating's probably within 30 feet of the 10-foot required buffer, so about 40 feet away. We'll come in, we'll put an ornamental fence, a nice decorative aluminum free rail fence around the boundary. Maintenance provided, and also provide access as required.
Okay, he makes reference to peripheral and unmarked graves, probably Indians and slaves, that need to be included in the boundary. So this man, I think he said in 30-
He's 75.
He said 30 years that he's been taking care of it, correct?
I think with, let me go back. Art says the boundary shall be determined by a qualified professional. So in my, my experience, it will come out, previous experience would be, happened to be what was believed to be, I just said it a bunch, a slave cemetery. My previous experience, sorry, previous experience would be slave cemetery, in this, in my previous instance, was a rock sitting vertical. Brought in the required professionals, walked through the forest, found the note, the marked graves. And then they do their work to determine the extents. I think that we're, we are committing to that. So in this case, Mr. Smart and his wife have kept up the cemetery with the, with the markers. We know where the headstones are at. So when we bring in our certified environmental folks, they will start there and actually probe or work their way out. I'm going to say 50 to 100 feet typically. If they find something, that means that limit just keeps moving out with it. And they just keep going, north, southeast, and west, to truly define the limits of the cemetery.
Okay. Other questions or comments from the commission?
Is that up on just this item or general?
In general.
Oh, general. Yes, I got, I got a few. For the city, city engineer, right away on Central Pike, is that all wrapped up? Are we good there, or?
I think there's a couple of points of clarification on that. One is, I know, Mayor, you mentioned the interchange project. I would state that there is a second project that they have illustrated in some of the exhibits that they've sent to us, that would encompass potentially, and probably most likely, the subsequent widening project on Central Pike. So I want to make sure that that is captured in with the Central Pike and interchange, all, the widening and the new interchange, both, as far as the right of way is concerned. Additionally, one of the concerns that I had and, and experience that we have in a lot of our projects, we can say we have the right of way width correct, but then there's a lot of times easements outside of that. And that can be for drainage, utilities, any number of different things. And sometimes easements can be as problematic to acquire as the right of way itself. And so I would like to note that. I did discuss that with your engineer. And everything seemed to be understandable on that, for that as being part of the process. So just two points of clarification there, one for the widening project, and secondly, for the easements.
Are you saying they agreed to dedicate it?
Yes, they did.
We will, go ahead, but we better capture that in an amendment in a minute. Go ahead. Is there something else?
The other one was just, I'm going to ask for a two-year moratorium on COs for hotels in the, and the reason I'm doing this is because, because we've got some, we've got some previous businesses, and that, that business is really suffering right now due to COVID. I'd just like to provide them a break on that, due to their financing. And this can be problematic with putting these additional spaces on them, if there's, if there's stuff in the pipeline immediately.
Now, is that going to mean hotels that are currently in the planning phase?
No, just, well, you're correct. There's one in the planning phase, but the others, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, here, there's seven ones.
All right, let's, let's-
Get from the planner?
I agree, no, I agree with that, but I didn't want to, the one, one in particular that I know of that's pretty close to going vertical, don't want to hold their COs-
For two years.
Let's, let's go back to that right of way on Central Pike. Do you want to make a motion to amend, for an amendment on that?
Yeah, I just, maybe, maybe a suggestion from the attorney on the right way to capture that. But essentially, we want to make sure we've got the right of way and the easements captured.
And we've got language that, in addition to the right of way that's being donated, they'll cooperate and grant utility easements and temporary construction easement outside the right of way area, if the same is necessary as determined by the city.
All right. Okay, I'll second that. Questions or comments on Amendment Number 8? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. And go ahead with your hotel.
And I'll say a two-year moratorium on hotel COs for any hotels that aren't currently under construction.
Okay, I'll second that. I did have a further question for you, though. If this is approved, and a hotel plans to build there, they're not going to be up and ready for a CO in two years anyway.
No, they would have to get busy.
Yeah.
But the, the point being is, is, you know, when someone's trying to finance, that there's nothing on the radar, at least for two years for them.
That moratorium is everywhere for a hotel, right? Or you stop just in this development?
This PUD.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's clarify that.
Okay. Can, can we take that a step further?
What do you have, Matt?
Well, perhaps, I mean, we, we've got a lot of excess capacity on hotels right now. We know that.
We do.
Primarily because of the travel restrictions and so forth. But, and then we have one that's being built, which won't be ready probably for a CO for almost two years. Why don't we have an additional moratorium? Maybe it's a two-year timeframe where no new hotel project can be proposed in the Providence Central PUD.
Only in the Providence Central PUD?
Yeah. And that way, those sites that are labeled as potential hotel, somebody might want to build one there someday, but they would be pushed out two years to make application, and then there'd be two more years probably to get to where they have a CO.
What, can, what are we trying to accomplish?
We've got a lot of hotels suffering.
A lot of excess-
My, my free market thought process just kicked in. And, and my, my mindset is that it is a free market. And if we've got hotels that are suffering, now the chances of additional hotels coming in wanting to build are slim and none.
You would think so. Typical economic theory, yeah? This would just lock it in.
I, I have to agree. I mean, I, I think that, I don't think somebody's going to build one if we're in the, if they don't think they're going to be able to, to have the capacity. They're not going to be able to, to, to fill the rooms. But besides that,
I don't see the bank giving them money to do it anymore.
I believe that this, that they're going to find, they'll have something for this pandemic, and things will be turned around. I have to believe that.
Well, I definitely believe, yes, that things will turn around. But I'm a little, I'm a little hesitant to say you cannot even bring something, proposal.
All right, well, I'm agreeable. Whatever you want to do it. What's your, you going to do with the two-year moratorium on COs?
Two-year moratorium on COs, and then I have, I have one more.
Excluding projects that are currently in the pipeline, right?
Yes.
Okay, I'll second that. Second, questions or comments on that one? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, that's a 3-2.
I consulted with me and Art.
Okay. Jamie, care?
Just a, I don't know if I'm ready to make an amendment on this, but I would like to get the feedback of the board on this. With these hotel parcels out here, we've got them identified as hotels on here. And according to the plan, they're locked into building hotels there. My thought is, why not just say hotels are any allowable use in the CMU? And my thought being there is, if somebody comes to us, or comes to them and wants to build an office building there, they're going to have to come back to the board to get it done. Why not we just go ahead and streamline that for them?
City Planner?
That would make life a lot easier on the developer, should you approve that motion. Because this is our guide for the future on final master development plans going forward. So if they have a hotel listed as a use for a certain building, then that's what they would need to build. But if you guys just allowed any use in CMU, the base zoning, be allowed in any of the buildings within this development, that would keep them from having to come back as a major amendment to the PMDP.
Okay, makes sense to me. Any, any comments?
What, okay, would that affect the anchor tenant at all for the, no? Okay.
Anchor tenant, who's that? I didn't know if you were referring to the apartments.
No, the office.
Okay, all right. You want to make an official amendment?
Yeah, my, my amendment is, is these parcels identified as hotels will be allowed either hotel or CMU, anything allowed by CMU use.
I just thought of something. When we do CMU, they can build more apartments.
If they meet the mixed use?
Yes. So that would be a bad amendment.
Or we could, you can ask staff to remove that from the zoning ordinance.
I thought we already had.
We haven't.
But I, I thought apartments were only allowable in CMU as part of an approved PUD, and they would not be approved in these spots.
No, it's allowed by right in CMU, as long as they meet those CMU, the mixed use site requirements, which is 5%, 5% and 10%. Or we can remove that from the zoning ordinance.
I would recommend that you remove it from the zoning ordinance, but in the meantime, I'd recommend that you say any use in CMU with the exception of apartments.
I'm in agreement with that, Mayor.
And I, can I just say, this came up at the town hall meeting as well? Because I asked, because you've got the apartments, because you have a commercial mixed use included in that, right?
Yes, they have those uses identified on what mixed uses-
And that's how you got it approved. So I was clear when I stated that if you came back to ever propose more apartments and included a little commercial area, that I definitely would not be supportive of that. So, I mean, that did come up at the town hall meeting.
Vice Mayor, you could also make the recommendation that no additional mixed use sites or buildings be approved within the development. That's what your desire is.
Well, the, my desire was, you know, that they just not be locked the hotels if, if somebody wants to put an office space in there, or, that was really what I was wanting. Just give the flexibility for, for them to market it. Either way, if they want to market a hotel there, or they want to recruit a company to come in here and put their office building in there. To me, I was just starting to offer the flexibility because it's in our, it's in all of our advantages, either recruit these tenants or, or have it set empty. I don't, seems to be the alternative.
All right, well, you made a motion. I second it. I think the motion is, Ms. Sheila, parcels labeled as hotel use on the Providence Central PUD are not exclusive to hotels. It could be any use that is allowable in CMU with the exception of apartments. You got that? Okay. Questions, comment, that was a motion and a second. Questions or comments on that? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That is unanimous. Anything else? Anybody? Ready for a final vote?
Aye.
We've been two hours, and we're on item number one.
Actually, at this point-
10.
What I would like to ask is that we do, make a motion to defer. Let them bring in an economic impact study, and begin at least with the creation of a master development plan for the entire interchange, rather than that one quadrant. And begin with the input from the other three quadrant landowners before proceeding.
All right, there's a motion. There was a motion to defer. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, questions or comments on the advisability of deferment?
I do. We already deferred the first of this year, earlier this year. And we wanted it to go back through the proper channels, through planning, public works, which it did. It went through the proper channels. It came to us by popular, by majority vote with the planning commission. And that's where we are. It serves no purpose to defer at this point.
Okay, we're talking about, at this point, the timing of it. And I think if Mayor will- Is there some reason why you want this to go through faster? I, I mean, is there, do you got something going on, some agenda?
No, I just don't want political games to be played here.
Hang on, I don't want to turn the microphone off.
Got some reason?
Let's, let's stay on the topic of-
To keep political games out of it.
Let's stay, all right. I don't want to do it, but I'm going to turn all the mics off. But let's stay on the topic of the advisability of deferment. Okay? I'm not going to be in favor, and I'll, I'll tell you why. I, I wish there could be a master plan for that entire, all four quadrants. Those property owners aren't present. They're not party to this. They're, we're not in a position to request that or even come up with that. So I can't, I can't support it just on that basis. We have a master, we do have a master plan on at least this quadrant. And it does move our ball forward, I think, as far as trying to recruit Class A offices, which has been a 20-year goal for me. So, and we failed for 20 years on that. Maybe we can make some headway. So I'm not going to be able to support the firm. Other comments?
If I may comment on that, too, the same time that this was the first reading of this that was passed, we also passed 85 acres out on, on the back with interchange. And, and there was nothing contingent upon apartments coming to attract Class A offices.
And I hope that one goes also.
Yeah, I mean, you know, hopefully.
Other comments?
I will, I will add, you know, we talked about at the beginning of this meeting, live, work, play, worship, and part of the city. And that's, that's been the stated goal and the vision of this city for, for many, many years now. And it's, the sign was, the sign was up on a cow pasture when I moved here. And I joked to my wife that that, that sign had been there for a long time, and it looked like the paint was about to-
I joked to my wife that that, that sign had been there for a long time and it looked like the paint was about to come off and it, it looked like things were stalling and sure enough, this, this area started growing and taking off and I've and I've lived through the days of two-lane roads and other things, but this is not a, this is not a project where they're talking about putting things on two-lane roads. They're talking about putting new roads in. They're talking about improving roads. And of course, of course, some will say, you know, can't count on T-Dot to do it. We can't. We can't force T-Dot in there. But we can do everything in our power to encourage T-Dot, to move as quickly as we can, to recruit that. And one of the things when we talk about live, work, play and worship, one of the key things there is we do living here in Mount Juliet pretty well. If you live, if you live in Mount Juliet, you enjoy, like was said earlier, one of the lowest cost, most efficient city governments. It was number one out of the top 30 in the state of Tennessee. Look at the safest city, the most playful city. Look at all those things that people think. And there's a reason why people want to work here. We got lived down pretty well. One thing we don't have, we don't have the market cornered on that we should as a city here. We don't have work. We have jobs, but for many of us, when you apply for a job, you know you're committed to either going downtown Nashville or you're committed to going to Franklin or the Brentwood area to work because that's just where they are. That's the reality. There's some here, but there's, there's, we're not on par with that to compete with it. So we've got live, I think we got a little work to do with play on the parks, but we're getting there. We got live, play and worship. We got that down, but we need to shore up work and we need to keep the focus on recruiting the jobs and completing the vision of, of Mount Juliet. I said it earlier in the budget cycle when it come through and we talked about transportation projects. I said, now's not the time to give up and quit on Mount Juliet. It's the time to double down on it. And I believe that, that's still true tonight. We could talk about the long-term planning and we have put things in place with the transportation plan. And this interchange is a key component to the transportation plan. Will it take care of all of Central Pike? It won't. It will not take care of all of Central Pike, but we can take care of our portion here in Mount Juliet and we can provide some traffic relief in Mount Juliet. Because if we do nothing, that's exactly what we'll get, folks, is nothing. If we don't, and like Mr. Malley says, sure, I mean, it would, it'd be easier, it'd be much easier to punt the ball down the road and wait till after the elections are over and then sneak back in here and slide another vote in on it, but at some point, you got to stand up for what you believe and you got to, you got to double down on the vision of your city because I know what brought me here and I know why I chose, not only when I come, but I know why I chose to stay and to raise my family here. And we haven't quite arrived at that place, but we got a lot of work to do and cleanup done in Providence. And to me, this is the first step to getting that done, getting the traffic relief on that thing. You're not gonna, you're not gonna arrive at the destination that you want to be until you take the first step.
Okay, y'all ready to vote on deferment? All in favor of the motion?
Okay, go ahead.
Motion to defer, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
That motion to defer fails on a two-three vote. We are on final vote for item 9.1.
I have an amendment to my motion on where we talked about within two miles of the development in District Four. I would like to add an amendment to say south of the interstate, south of I-40.
So you're saying?
Two miles south of the interstate, as long as it's south of the interstate.
Okay, all right. Fair enough.
I got one question on that.
I get that one, yeah.
Can we, can we leave it open to say the interchange as well in case there's some things we need to handle on the north side? Directly related to that interchange?
Well, I guess we could, but I have some things that I would like to do around District Four that I've been trying months to do. And I would like to see them accomplished.
I, yeah, okay.
Okay, motion is to amend to say that the improvements that are in nexus to the project would occur within two miles of the site excluding anything north of I-4.
Okay, Mayor, if I may. You are, I mean, this is unbelievable. You've got people that have not had any input into this particular process and now you're going to exclude them from having any representation or an opportunity to vote for anybody for a representation.
No, 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 we're not talking about
Down the road. Now, how's that going to work?
We're not talking about that. We're talking about the improvements that might be done, off-site improvements.
For the $1,000 per apartment.
Okay, I understand that. You're not talking, I want to make sure that we're not talking about when we do the redistricting. That's not what you're talking about, correct?
We agreed to do the two miles regardless of how they redistrict to do the two miles and I want to add to that south of the interstate to keep the money south.
So you're not taking those people north out? I thought that's what you just said. That's why I missed.
She's just saying project, projects that are identified are nearer to Providence Central than north of the interstate, then, and excludes anything north of the interstate. I, I hear you. I get what you're saying. It could have been spent up at Lowe's somewhere in that area. I get it.
Yeah, I want to keep it south of there.
Yeah. Probably Lowe's is probably within two miles, actually.
It is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I, I get it. Okay.
Yeah, it is.
Walks it.
Yeah. Okay, I will second that. All in favor of that one, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
No.
That's a three-two.
I have a motion to add three variances for planning.
They're already in, aren't they?
They just need to be added into the conditions. You guys need to accept those.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, there's three. Request to vary maximum lot coverage in area H1 and H2 from 25% to 35%. That's one. Two, request to omit a portion of the required fence around area E along the stream buffer. That's two, request to deviate from facade material standards to allow up to 10% fiber cement in section E.
Okay, because that fence thing that was just mentioned, does that affect the amendment that was passed earlier?
No, sir.
Okay, all right. All right.
Second.
All in favor of that, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay. We're at now two and a half hours on item number one. Y'all ready for a final vote on?
I won't.
No, man. Okay, go ahead.
Respectfully, Ms. Malley, okay. You did a survey from some of your constituents and so you had 60% or 40% or 50 or whatever you said. What if it was totally opposite? Would you be voting for this tonight?
No.
Okay, then is that not the same thing as saying it's political? So I'm saying this is what I'm, but this is what I want to say. When I vote for this, I made a commitment to my constituents. And if they don't want to elect me this next time, that's fine. I don't have to sit up here. But when I make a promise, I make a promise.
You made a campaign promise.
I did, and I have stuck with it this whole time.
All right. Hey, guys, let's, let's get back on track, okay?
And one added thing in the Chronicle July 1 edition, it had an article in there on T-Dot projects move forward during COVID-19. So I think that is an advantage to this development.
Okay, we're ready for the final vote. This has been amended 12 times and has all and, and by the way, if anybody watching and getting frustrated with this, it's a big project and it's an important project and it was important that we get it right. So.
Yes.
Anyway, that's where we are for the final vote then on item 9.1. All in favor of that project as amended 12 times, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, that is approved on a three-two vote. Next item is item 9-2, an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget, ordinance 2020-25 to align the deputy fire chief position with existing city policy and procedures. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions, comments from the commission? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's me. Nay. That does pass four to one. Next item is 9-3, an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2019, 2020 budget, ordinance 2019-35 to increase construction expenditures for the Woodridge Place sidewalks. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions, comments from the commission?
And keep in mind, I've been out of pocket for a little bit. Can somebody explain this to me while we're over on the budget on this?
That's going to be Dana. Do you have a microphone that works? See if that's working.
So, okay, yes, it's working. Andy might be better to explain that, but from what I understand, there were some errors in the initial, or I guess not error, but something in the initial cost estimates. There was some retainer wall. I'm sorry, I haven't looked at it. Andy, okay. Andy and Matt could probably better explain it than I could. Yes, there were some, there wasn't as much available as they thought there was going to be.
What was your question? Question is, we've got budget ordinance amended here to increase construction costs or expenditures for, to 799 on the Woodridge Place sidewalks.
Okay. One of the biggest expenses was retaining wall. The consultant missed the quantity on that and it overran quite a bit. Also, we hit bedrock and we didn't have enough topsoil to redistribute through the site. So we had to bring in topsoil from offsite. So those are the two major expenses on that.
$80,000 is a lot of topsoil.
We actually saved money on the other project. There was two projects constructed together. The LZ Patent Safe Process School, it was, it went under quite a bit and then this one went over.
Okay, this is, this is part of the grant, wasn't it?
Yes.
Okay, so if this is part of the grant, how much has been out of our pocket so far as far as?
I think I broke it down in the executive summary. I don't
I'm sorry.
I broke it down in the executive summary. I don't have that with me. It should, the cost breakdown should be in there.
Let me look at. I don't have it on here.
Andy has his laptop. You can probably get that.
Keep going, you're not a fraud.
It's landmarked?
It's not on there.
Here it comes.
In the packet.
It was on the fir, it was on the first reading, if I'm not mistaken.
And I apologize, guys, because I wasn't here. I'm just trying to get an idea of what the cost is to taxpayers to I mean, we got a grant for the vast majority of that, if I'm not mistaken, right?
That grant covered 80% of the construction and we were responsible for 20%. I think with overruns, it ended up being we had to put in 30%, somewhere in there.
Okay. The safer That's fine, Andy, don't worry about it right now.
The safer out the school was 100%.
That is correct. The safer out the school, but this is a separate project, even though they were constructed together. The Woodridge was 20%.
The next grant that we got for the connection of it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because the first one was just from Woodville to the school and then this extended it from the school up to
Mount Juliet.
Juliet Road.
Got it.
And if you'll notice that where they put the sidewalk and the things, it's, it's the
There was a bust in the retaining wall quantity. That's the big expense. It wasn't caught until the contractor got into construction.
Where is that retaining wall at? Then it close to the school?
Down by the middle school.
Okay. Yeah, actually, I know exactly where it's at.
A big ditch. All in favor of item 9-3, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Next item is carryover items from previous meeting, item labeled 9-1, an ordinance to annex into the corporate boundaries of the city of Mount Juliet approximately 0.85 acres. Property known as Landmark Homes and being found at 6020 Central Pike, map 097, parcel 011.08 and being located within the city's urban growth boundary. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Okay, and I heard a second. Questions, comments on the commission?
Just a comment, I would, I'd like to see that, that lot comply with current codes before second reading.
Okay, I think the property owner would like to know what you're referring to, probably.
Unless I'm on the wrong item.
Landmark.
Yeah, landmark.
What's he need to do?
I think there's, I think there's an old mobile home on there that needs to go.
Here is, when we purchased this, the mobile home was still in place. It's been disconnected. It's now been sold for the third time. The person that has
You made a lot of money off of it.
Uh, no, nobody's tender to check because they haven't moved it yet. The, the current fellow that has the, the contract on it has been told that he has 60 days to move it. If he does not, then we will bring in two dumpsters in the backhoe or a trackhoe and take care of it ourselves. But I'm just giving him the opportunity to come and get what he put a deposit on. Once again, 60 days from today, if it's not gone, we'll collapse it and haul it off.
All right, thank you.
My pleasure.
All right, all in favor of item 9-1, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Next item is 9-2, an ordinance to rezone property known as Landmark Homes, being found at 6020 Central Pike, map 97, parcel 011.08, from Wilson County Limited Office Commercial to Mount Juliet Commercial Mixed Use. Is there a motion?
Motion.
And I already heard a second. Questions, comments on the commission? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Next item is 9-3, an ordinance to annex into the corporate boundaries of the city of Mount Juliet, approximately 72 acres. Property known as Coffin Farms and being found at 780 in 1367 South Rutland Road, map 096, parcels 13, 16 and 3203 and being located within the city's urban growth boundary. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, questions, comments from the commission?
Mayor, before we get into this, because this is probably going to be
Well, we're only on annexation. I suggest we go ahead and do it.
And then?
Then we'll talk about the other one.
Yeah, because I got
Yeah, questions or comments on annexation? All in favor, signify. We're just
All right, so that most of us needs to go to the next one.
Right. Yep, all in favor of 9-3, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. We are in need of a seven-minute break. We will reconvene at 9:05. All right, gang, we're going to try to get going again. Thank you all. Going to try to get through another item. Okay, everybody back? Need one more commissioner?
Needs a break.
For those that are watching on TV, we just took a short break. It's nine oh five. We're reconvening now. We're going to be on item nine point four. This is an ordinance to rezone to RS fifteen PUD and adopt the preliminary master development plan for the Coffin Farms project being located at seven eight oh in thirteen sixty seven South Rutland Road, map zero nine six, parcels thirteen sixteen and thirty two oh three in the city of Mount Juliet, Wilson County, Tennessee. Is there a motion? Is there a second? I'm going to second, and before we start on this, I'm going to make a recommendation that each of us just hit the high points. Just, we don't want to go into a lot of detail now. I think the, the model for that is what we just did on Providence Central. We passed it through on first reading. We made our comments, made our concerns known, and then on second reading, we, we went into specific detail. I'm going to recommend we do that again, or we're going to be here two more hours on this project. So Commissioner Malley, it's your district. I'm going to let you hit your list first, and I've got a list as well. Go ahead.
I am making a motion for the developers, developers, consideration for a voluntary contribution of twenty five hundred dollars per home, and I would like that earmarked for parks and rec in the event the city were to purchase the lines property of the twenty three acres. That may or may not happen at this point. Otherwise, if not, I would like to earmark the funds for offsite infrastructure.
Just hit the high points right now.
Okay.
That's all the details.
And it's, so it's my understanding the applicant has agreed, and it would be issued with each building permit applied for. So, so that was one, and the other one was increase the minimum lot size to sixty five hundred square foot per lot. And then I have a question, because I need feedback before adding this in. What would be, the developer was asking for a five percent allowance for a minimum six thousand foot, square foot lot before.
Let me hit, let me hit my list, and you can see what I'm talking about, and then you can go ahead. So the developer is in the room. Here's, here are my concerns really quick. RS twenty, not RS fifteen. Six-foot side setbacks are too small. There's no second entrance on the north side. There's a stub road up there that goes to absolutely nothing. It goes to backyard in Baird Farms. The front-facing garages, that is a no. They're going to be side-facing or rear-entry garages. The pool needs to have lap lanes. You've only got four parking spaces for the south side amenity. That's inadequate. There's a fire pit, a community garden, a playground, and other things. That's completely inadequate, and there's only sixteen parking spaces on the north side amenity, which includes a soccer field, a pool, and a playground, completely inadequate. That's what I need to hear answered on second reading. Not now. I'm willing to move it through on first reading, but I'm going to go into detail on that on second reading. Now, go ahead with your list.
Okay. The motion is because the developer has agreed to voluntary contribute twenty five hundred dollars per home, and I would like to have that earmarked, which I guess I could say that in second reading. Okay, the second one is to increase the minimum lot size to sixty five hundred square foot per lot. And in doing that, I would like your feedback, because the developer is asking for a five percent allowance on that.
Well, if you heard mine, that's not going anyway. Go ahead.
Okay. Well, that was really all the motion I was going to propose for now. The rest of it, I've already talked to the developer about anyway, so I can finish that at second reading.
Okay.
But those two I wanted to hear.
You got anything on Coffin?
Yes, sir, on Coffin, one of the things I'm looking at, and we have already gone through Winfield, Harrington, Baird Farms, and now we're looking at another development over there. I would like for them to come in with intermediate, in between the beginning and ending drainage, so that we can avoid the, the problem that we've got. And I'd like for those very distinctly shown, so that we, we know exactly where we're going and how we're going to get there when they come back in the second reading.
Very valid catch on the drainage problems. Vice Mayor, you got anything?
Uh, what Mr. Justice said about the drainage, you brought up the stub, the stub to Baird Farms. I, I don't know if the lot there is even available to be purchased, or has already been developed or not, but I could drive over there and verify. But if it's not, that's a good, good catch on that one. And it was primarily the drainage, the, I think you mentioned the setbacks already.
The side setbacks.
Side setbacks. It was, um, too small anyway, but you caught that. I don't think, I don't think I got anything else.
Okay, Commissioner Giles, you have anything? Okay, sounds like it's going to fail on second reading, Frank, unless you can address that, but I'm willing to pass it through on first reading and give him a shot to fix it. You all good with that or not?
Um, yeah, I have a motion on the table.
We, well, what's your, we weren't making motions, but go ahead.
Oh, okay.
That whole twenty five hundred thing and?
Yeah, and the square foot.
Yeah, that's, we'll deal with that on second reading.
And might I add, too, if we could actually look at what the, the actual impact is before we set an amount of money of twenty five hundred, so I'm just going to say twenty five hundred per lot without knowing what the actual impact is. It could be less than that, could be more than that, but we need to know what that actual offsite impact is and onsite impact before we go applying a dollar figure to it.
Okay, Mr. Horton, you got the list there? You got your homework assignment? All right. All in favor of item nine four at this time, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, that's a four one, so Frank, be ready for a couple hours on second reading. All right. Item nine five is an ordinance amending the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty one budget, ordinance twenty twenty dash twenty five to reappropriate funds for police vehicles. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions, comments from the commission? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Next item is nine six, an ordinance amending the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty one budget, ordinance twenty twenty dash twenty five to appropriate funds for replacement of a fire vehicle covered by insurance proceeds. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Next item is a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a certificate of compliance for Dollar General number twenty six twenty seven, located at twelve twenty nine North Mount Juliet Road, to sell wine. Is there a motion? I'll make a motion. Is there, I heard a second. Questions or comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, all in.
Yeah.
All, is that, anybody opposed? All, that passes unanimously. I'm going too fast for myself. Item nine two, a resolution declaring city of Mount Juliet public works property a surplus to be disposed of at GovDeals auction. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. We are on a discussion item. I'm going to recommend that we push that to the next meeting.
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
I agree.
Discussion item is now moved to the next meeting. Hopefully, we won't have a lengthy agenda like this. We're on new business. Item eleven one, an ordinance amending part B of the Unified Development Code of the city of Mount Juliet, known as the zoning regulations, ordinance two thousand and one dash twenty nine, adopted October the eighth, two thousand and one, as amended by amending Article six, commercial regulations, section six dash one oh two, uses and structures, table six dash one oh two A, to include transient habitation as a conditional use in CTC, commercial town center, zone districts with a planned unit development overlay, and to amend section six dash one oh three three, height regulations to include transient habitation hotels in the height exemption for buildings when within point five miles of the Music City Star Station. Wow.
Can you read that?
Who wrote that? Is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second? I'll second. Yes, ma'am. That was a mouthful.
Planning Commission actually made a recommendation to require a conditional use permit for this request, rather than permitted by right for the transient habitation within the CTC districts. However, you guys are already allowed the right to approve conditional use permits within a PUD, so if you are desiring to go forward with this, I would like.
Oh, he's saying get it closer.
I would like for you to go back to our original proposal, which would be a P for permitted, rather than the C, conditional use permit. You guys already, the Board of Commissioners have the right to issue a conditional use permit already, and the recommendation from the Planning Commission was changed from permitted to conditional use. So I'm asking if you guys could just change it back to P permitted, if you desire to carry this forward, this item forward.
You, you trying to trump your board?
No. I, I wasn't quick enough on my feet. I thought about it on the way home. I was like, shoot, and conditional use permit is granted by you guys in a, in a PUD circumstance, so.
Okay.
That's why.
People, when they hear the words transient habitation, they get nervous, so tell them what, tell them what's driving this.
Sure. Transient habitation is, is hotel motel use, and we've had some interest as of late for properties that are zoned CTC or have the land use designation of commercial neighborhood services, which would support a CTC zoning. If we were to allow a hotel in town center right now, it would have to have commercial retail center, commercial general CI, which is commercial interchange, and that just wouldn't make sense. So I think it would make more sense if you guys do desire for that use to be included in our town center, to allow it in that commercial town center zoning classification. And when I say town center, it doesn't have to just be in the middle of town. There are other places in the city that are designated as neighborhood services where a smaller type hotel or transient habitation use would be allowed.
Yeah, keep in mind, though, when we, we have a hotel ordinance which requires a one hundred rooms, so you can't have a small hotel.
That's correct, and I, I really think that's what protects this use in the commercial town center zoning.
Yeah, so we've, we're beginning to see interest in tourism.
Correct.
Near our train station, and so there might be interest for someone to put a hotel in conjunction with a tourist.
And in other places in the city where this wouldn't normally be allowed.
Yeah, okay.
If I may?
Yes, sir.
One of my major concerns is we have some folks over here on West Caldwell and Fourth in that area right there that have, they're longstanding residential.
Correct.
I mean, some of the oldest in the city.
My favorite area in town.
Yeah, it's one of my favorite areas. I spent a lot of time there growing up. My issue is I don't want a hotel anywhere near those people. Nowhere near those particular homes. How do we protect them? That's what I need to know. I just, if you tell me how that happens, so that that is not even a remote possibility, I'm good.
Yeah, well, the only thing that I can offer you is our landscape and buffer requirements.
Is what? I'm sorry.
Our landscaping and buffering requirements. If you do allow this in the CTC classification, unfortunately, some residential development adjoins that, and they would be affected by this proposal.
Okay, then, then I don't see that any possible way I can vote for it.
Okay.
It's not, to me, that's not even.
I mean, I share your concern, but I do think this is potentially really important.
I mean, our whole town center is redeveloping right now, and I'd hate to miss out on an opportunity.
I'm sorry?
Our whole town center is in the process of redeveloping at this time, and I just feel like that this is a great opportunity for our city moving forward. That's why I brought it before you.
Our town center may be in, in, in the middle of rebuilding, but I don't want it to be at the expense of people who have lived here their entire lives.
I understand.
Out on a small street, in the middle of our small city, that's not acceptable. It's not okay in any shape, form, or fashion to do that to these people. Matter of fact, I mean, I, I would hope that they would get, hire an attorney as effective as Tom White or, or General Marquetti to fight us over this, and I'll testify with them.
Other comments?
The, but the traffic's not going to be.
It doesn't matter. Nobody wants, these people up here don't need to be looking at the back of a hotel. No way.
Okay, other comments?
I, I'll say, from the Planning Commission, the comment was made that, you know, this is, this is an opportunity, not what Commissioner Justice is talking about, putting impact on residential, but you've got areas that, you know, quite frankly, could use a little help, like redevelopment, some stuff over an industrial drive, and this, this is right, puts us right in the crosshairs of that to, to potentially bring something in. I mean, there's, there's nothing in the pipeline that I don't think, I don't think anybody's aware of anything, but.
Well, actually, there is.
Well, I, yes, what you're talking about, but I don't.
But it could go over what James is talking about. I mean, things can go over.
And again, there's no residents over there. I don't think that's an issue. The issue is when you go up here and you start impacting even one person's residence, residence, where they live, where they build, where they're, and in this case, where a lot of them is relatives and, and, and the people who actually started the city lived over there to a large degree, and now we're going to go over there and. And now we're gonna go over there and build something that's going to just overshadow these folks, and that's not acceptable.
But that's, I mean, in fairness too, that's access issues there and even the site considering's got access issues and hurdles to overcome just with what they've got, so.
I don't disagree with you.
I can't see, I can't see that ever, ever happening, especially a requirement for 100 rooms. They're just, I can't see how that would even fit at all over there. And I don't, I don't know if we just exclude that spot or something, if that helps. But, I mean, the opportunity I see long term for this over an industrial industrial drive in that area as we move forward is a great opportunity, I think, for us.
I agree, again, I don't disagree with that part. Again, though, what I am saying is that the people that live over there and have lived over there and their grandparents and everybody else who lived over there, that's not fair then.
Well, I do think we want to be sensitive to that, but would, if a site was chosen that was in desperate need of redevelopment, somewhere along the train tracks or something, would you be good with that?
If it did not impact an entire neighborhood like this does.
I can think of a couple of places that would fit your criteria then.
There are certain areas over there, and this is one of the, this is not a rundown here, it's very well kept.
Yeah.
The roads are very small.
I know what you're talking about. Tell you what, let's, why don't we work on this? There's nothing pressing for like tomorrow.
Just trying to be proactive.
Yep, so I'm gonna make a motion to defer one meeting.
Second.
Hours late anyway, so, second, okay. Questions or comments on the advisability of deferment? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That is deferred one meeting unanimously. Next item is 11.2, an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2020-2021 budget, ordinance 2020-25 to accept the 2020 Governor's Local Support Grant funds of $818,396 and appropriate the funds for the requested capital items. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments from the commission?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you whoever sent this money. Did we get it yet? We got the money? Okay, great.
So we got the check in hand. Even better.
This is actually money that, and to what degree, I'm not completely familiar, but I do know that Representative Susan Landworth to give us this.
Yes.
And at budget time, we talked about three options for this money. Well, Kenny had recommended three, the top three.
You have a list, you have a list in your packet of what they're recommending, yep.
Okay.
All right, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? That passes unanimously. Next item is a resolution approving an amendment to the agreement between the city of Mount Juliet and the Tennessee Department of Transportation for Phase 1 of the Lebanon Road Sidewalk Project and authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. 11.4 was pulled at set agenda. We're on 11.5, a resolution to reinstate the revoked alcoholic beverage permit to Katz Bar and Grill at the July 14, 2020, meeting of the Mount Juliet Alcoholic Beverage Board for not meeting the ratio of food sales to wholesale beer purchases until December 31, 2020, due to the COVID pandemic. Original permit was issued in September 2018. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments from the commission?
Mayor, this is mine, and if I could explain, the lady that was in here earlier with Katz was in the process of bringing her numbers up when the COVID hit. When that hit, the numbers went backwards. One of the issues that came up was not, and Gino, you might make sure that we're on the same page here, was not, there was nothing there for her, there was either, either or. Either shut her down or there was no fine available, there was no other avenue available for them. Regretfully, and every one of them said that, regretfully, they didn't have any choice in this matter. And one of the issues that we've got is with the COVID, people aren't going in for lunch, that affects her numbers because everybody's sitting at home. What I have done is to talk to her, try to figure out a game plan, what she's gonna go forward with. So hopefully get her through the COVID part and get her reinstated for 90 days. In that period though, I would also look at the possibility of the Beer Board coming up with alternatives to revocation to any business that we've got that is an active business with the actual amount of money that they've actually contributed to open their place business here in Mount Juliet. So they want to be in a good spot. And they were working towards that when they got hit with this. Now, they've only been in business for a year and three months when all this happened and there was a change in the ordinance that said that they had to be open for a year and use a year's numbers before they could apply. Since that time, they've moved towards it, then COVID hit, and this is where we are. Now, I don't think, talking to the city attorney earlier, that this is not gonna set any kind of precedence, hopefully, because the COVID numbers are not accurate numbers to a large degree. Our workforce and lack of workforce going to work is not allowing people to put their rears in the seats. So what I'm asking here is we could just to give them a 90-day stay of execution. We might need to keep them just shutting this business down.
Questions or comments from the commission? I mean, I'm gonna not be able to support it. It's nothing against Katz, nothing against the two ladies that were here. But it's been about, I'm gonna say about 30 people have sat at this table over the years. And I knew every single one of them. All the way back to Mr. Hibbit, Ms. Hibbit. And once beer came in, this five to one ratio that we talk about was supported by every single person that sat at this table. And the rationale was pretty straightforward. It was that, yes, people can have a meal and have a beer, and now a mixed drink. That's understandable. But what we never wanted was a beer joint, a place that sold only beer. And we've had three that I know of, and none of them ever met the five to one and they all ended up leaving. There've been four mayors that have been elected citywide prior to the, Mayor Wainick, it was, the mayor was selected by the commissioners. All four, I've heard them all say, right here at this microphone, that their vision for Mount Juliet is not beer joints. Heard them say it, every one of them. Mayor Wainick said it, Mayor Mack said it, Mayor Elam said it, I've said it. If we do this, what, how could we say no to the next one? I mean.
What I was just discussing.
There's absolutely no way. You can't be selective and say, well, it's okay if you don't meet the five to one, but we want you to meet it. And it doesn't even matter, we'll get taken to court by you know who over there. And we've been taken to court by them already, it'll happen again.
One difference, well, this will not be someone who's been in business past that initial 12 months. You take that initial 12 months, get them, their time to get up. You can extend that additional three months, which they did. And then came the pandemic and that impacted it. So that would be the difference between somebody who's been in business and has met the numbers. It's that, that would be the non-presence, that this be set, this would be restricted to a new business impacted by a serious emergency such as a pandemic and not, a new business, not someone that's been in operation. So if someone's been in operation and it impacts and they fall below it, they could not come in here and say, hey, board, you let this person go. Just by way of a difference in how this is limited.
Absolutely guarantee you they'll make that case, guarantee it. They will come in and say that. And then the numbers, I'm seeing all the numbers, they're not even close. I mean, and I, they have a nice establishment. So it's not that I'm against that establishment. What I am against is if the next guy has a ratty establishment, if it's a dive bar, a beer joint, and he comes in and says, well, you did it for them, you gotta do it for me, and he's gonna take us to court, and we're probably, Gino, I'm sorry, I just, we're gonna lose that case. We're gonna totally lose that case.
There is some reasonable basis in the difference.
And so I hate it, they have a nice place, I hate it for them. I've had meals there, it's great. I don't know why people aren't going there more.
Because of the COVID.
I get it, but their numbers pre-COVID weren't any better.
Well, actually, they were.
No, I'm looking at it.
Their number's gone up to $3 and something, over way 2.5, COVID hit, went down to below 2.
2.16.
Yeah, 2.16. Now, I will also tell you, Mayor, you know, in the midst of the COVID campaign that we've got going on, federally and statewide and locally, we've got police officers that aren't even enforcing the speed limits to the level that they have been because of this COVID stuff. You know, but then we're gonna put a business out of business at the same time. And I don't think at the time.
And they haven't, they're not, they've only had their beer permit revoked. They're not out of business, they can still sell.
They don't, they don't have, yes, they can still sell liquor, I would hope.
And food.
And they can sell food. The problem that we get into, Mayor, is that, you know, there's not the numbers in the seats to be able to provide them with the resources to maintain their open.
I totally get it, but I'm not gonna open the door for the rusty nail to come in here and do these.
It's called the crusty snail, by the way, and I agree with you.
And I don't think anybody sitting at this table even now.
If it weren't for COVID, I wouldn't be asking a question.
Has a vision for beer joints, dive bars in Mount Juliet. If that's the vision of this board, I'm gonna change my mind and run again, I'll tell you that. I have no way am I sitting back and letting dive bars destroy this town.
Okay, so.
We've done too good.
You just got there saying though that you had been there and eaten, and you liked the place, it was a nice place. But then you just called it a dive bar, so I mean.
No, I did not, no.
No, he didn't.
I did not.
That's kind of what I got out of that, I apologize if I missed you on that one.
I said if we allow it for this applicant, the rusty nail, crusty snail, whatever you wanna call it, when they come in and they don't make the ratio, they're gonna point right to this and they're gonna say.
And if they're in the middle of the COVID, in the pandemic.
Cause I'm gonna, I want the exact same exemption that Katz got.
If they're in the middle of this and they might very well.
Yeah, it's gonna be a hard needle to thread right there, anyway.
Any other businesses having the same issue?
We've had three.
Like currently because of COVID?
You're talking about three in the history.
Yeah.
Plus the fact that I would also ask, we allow the Beer Board some room here. It was either or, there was no room, there was no area in there for them to work. To say, okay, we're gonna give you a 15-day, okay, or we're gonna give you 30 days. None of that, okay, this was.
I thought they got extensions. They did get an extension.
They got an extension of 30 days, over 90 days.
Nevertheless.
And that was it.
So one extension of 30 days they've already got.
Been in place for 25 years and nobody's sought to change it. And if you want to change it, change it, but.
So what if we do the three months, then what? And if they don't meet it?
I'm sorry?
If we extended three months and they don't meet the quota, then what?
Well, all we're gonna do is give them an additional three months. At that point, then we don't have any choice. But they, you know, hopefully, we'll have some numbers where we go up for them that the COVID 19 is not killing them. That's the problem you get into right now. There are no people going to work and then going out for lunch, going to eat there at lunchtime. They've got pretty decent dinner craft. But during the day, there's nothing there because nobody's working. Everybody's eating, working from home right now. That's the problem you get into.
Not a problem for anybody else, but.
I wanna ask Gino something. The key word over here, I thought I heard him say was selective, or you said that. And there's gotta be consistency, so do we have that in our ordinance right now? That that can be allowed if there's, we wouldn't have known about COVID. So is this, is your legal opinion that it's okay? Or are you saying that it's in our ordinance that we can do that? I'm a little confused on.
Prior, and I'm saying if this board is of a mind to grant and override the Beer Board, which it is allowed to do under several Attorney General opinions, then the basis for the difference between this particular situation, it is a, two things. Number one, a new business, which allows that 12 months, it was extended three months and then COVID-19 hit, versus someone who's been in business, not a new business, and nothing goes on and they hit with that.
So basically, that would be our defense if we were sued.
Correct.
So is it of your legal opinion that we would have that? It's not really written in anything.
Absolutely.
So my concern is, is that it should be written somewhere that there was some kind of leeway for the Beer Board to do something or not do it, because there's gotta be consistency, and I think that's where we can get in trouble.
And they have no leeway. I mean, they get to look at the numbers and that's all it is.
Who's they?
They being the Beer, uh, Alcoholic Beverage Board.
Oh, well, they did give them an extension beyond the.
The first, yeah, they could give a three-month extension, and that's what they did. That was all the quote leeway that they had. And then when she didn't meet it.
90 days or 30 days?
90 days. They gave them three months extension.
And they still didn't bring it up.
Okay.
Correct.
So you're wanting an additional 90 days, basically.
What I'm asking for is, yes, for the, to give them a 90-day extension. They will come in with a marketing plan, they will try to work this marketing plan, get it up. If they don't, then there's nothing we can do about it. But meanwhile, we need to give the Alcoholic Beverage Board, I keep wanting to call it the Beer Board, we want to give them a little latitude so that if there are extenuating circumstances, we don't wind up back in this position again. And that gives us also a little time to be able to work this and work through this.
So I'm confused, they've already, the Beer Board extended them 90 days already, and with your 90 days, that's gonna be six months or whatever total?
180 days.
Yeah.
Anyway, I can't, I'm, if I woke up one day and we got a bunch of dive bars in this town, I would so regret getting out of this. That's just not the vision, I don't think that's anybody's vision. That's what this can lead to.
Through mechanism of losses.
Well, sure, but just precedent?
Yeah.
That's about the easiest argument anybody could, you don't think USA Bunch is gonna come in here and say?
Without naming on that was the one on the back of my mind as well.
They'll be in here the next day.
I guess my problem is, is I looked at all of, all the numbers through this and had all of 2019, before the, before a COVID on it. I want to be as helpful and beneficial as I can through any business through this situation. And I, I think everybody on the board can agree on that. And, but at the same time, I'm fearful of taking a resolution, which there's, there's no precedence in the city of doing any action like this and moving forward and potentially opening a door on it. To me, I think the more prudent thing would be to actually put this in the, amend the law, to put this in the law, to give the Beer Board the actions to do that, or the BLC or something, but spell it out.
I think it's, I'm agreeing with you.
And that's, that is the proper process. And the existing law's been in place a long time and it's never been even discussed.
Yeah, I really like the concept of trying to help somebody in a situation like this. I mean, that's, that's what we should be doing in the city, is trying to help, help our citizens, help our businesses. I mean, if we can't give them a yes, we need to find a way to give them a yes. But I don't, I don't think this is the, is this necessarily the way to go at it? Cause I'm really fearful of where this leads to next.
Once again, I worked through it with the city attorney. I believe the fear has been alleviated by his comments and his legal knowledge. And at this point, I would actually go with him. I don't think anybody's hurt by giving them a 90-day extension. If they don't make it, they know what the end result is. Meanwhile, we give the Beer Board, and we do all this simultaneously, we give the Beer Board, the Beverage Board, the opportunity to be able to make some of these decisions without having to come back to the city commission.
Other comments?
Matter of fact, if I would say, there are other parts of this beer statute, if I'm not mistaken, that the Beer Board does actually have some maneuverability. This particular, on the five to one, they don't have that, is that correct?
Correct.
So I don't know why we're being that harsh on one area of it when we can actually make some moves.
I mean, in fairness, I mean, as a city, and I think one of those examples where somebody wasn't meeting their numbers. we did go in and actually changed the law. And this is, this has been seven, eight years ago, that we did change the law. And, but we changed the actual ordinance and spelled it out in there. And just like I thought would happen, the business went under anyway. But it was through no fault of the city. I mean, we did everything we could to do it. But we did it by changing the actual ordinance. That, that's my difference on it.
Well, if, if the Beer Board already gave them 90 days, don't they already have that flexibility? Or am I just confused?
They gave them 90 days.
So what flexibility don't they have?
They had 90 days after the first year. That, that's in the statute. They could extend it 90 days. But that, that's the extent. But at the end, that nine days, they had no more leeway. For new businesses, you took that first 12 months and they were allowed to extend it 90 days. So at the end, that 90 days, their ability to do anything further, other than look at the five-to-one or in the five ratio, really.
Haven't they been in business since September of 2018?
2018. Permit was issued September 11, 2018, began operating October 2018.
A little less than two years we've been operating. All right. Other, other comments? Are we all ready to vote? All in favor of 11-5, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
That fails 1-4. I hate that for that particular enterprise. I wish them well. The risk of opening that door to a new precedent for businesses that are not reputable would have been too great. Next item is 11-6, a resolution to direct the city manager, finance director, and chief of police to issue a request for proposal for the expansion of the police headquarters with a hardened two-story building that will help ensure the safety of the police employees and facility. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second? I'll second. Questions or comments from the commission?
Yeah, I'd like to comment on this. Due to the current events in America, and we've got the 300 that's come in for the hardened facility, which was going to be small. And we've got the 200,000 that came in to harden a generator, which will be cheaper to go on and do it when we, we can construct what they need over there. I think it would be very, very wise for us to go on and do this. The tenure study that they're going to bring back was, was going to outline this, I'm sure, because this is one of the needs that they brought forth to us during the budget time. Going back to the current events, as we all know, what's happening, what's been happening. There's businesses here in Mount Juliet that's been concerned enough to protect their businesses during this time. We've had two recent storms, so we need the, the generator hardened over there. As you well know, obviously, we don't have to talk about the tornado and then the straight line winds. Because of the figures that Mr. Martin told us today, dealing with the sales tax, we can, we can hope that, um, because none of us, I don't think was, was positive that, that that would be up. I thought that it would be down. And it's, it's astounding that it's that, that much. So I think now would be a good time. And then when they bring, and I'm only assuming this, and I think the PD could, could comment on this, when they bring the tenure plan up, if we go on and we get bids to, to build this now, and if we vote on this for one of those bids, then let's say that that tenure plan called that they needed, and this is just hypothetically. Let's say that they needed 400,000 more every year to, to do, to do what, to, to, uh, to do what they needed to do in, in the police station. And their, their, um, actually, their, their police as well, or any kind of cars or equipment, whatever. This, if we do this upfront, then that figure may go down to, say, hypothetically, again, 200,000 a year. Those are just figures that's being thrown out. But what I'm trying to show is, is that if we do it now, we can get the benefit for it. And then we can, we can budget when they bring this tenure, um, tenure plan back. And then the other thing that's really important about this is the evidence retention. I call it retention. There's another name for it, I think, from a PD. So this would, would give them the room for that. And, um, you know, I, I think we need to be concerned about what we've seen and what could happen, and hopefully it wouldn't. But we need to harden that facility over there. And I think now would be a good time to go on and do it. So that's what the resolution is for. We're not really voting on any figures. They're going to bring those back. And then it would be at that time if we chose to do so.
Other comments?
So the three items that we talked about at budget, um, the top three items that Kenny had recommended, if this passes tonight, that, that can still be discussed as far as dollars.
That's going to be, that's going to be brought when they would get bids to, to, to build it.
Okay.
And then we would vote on yea or nay for that. And it would be closed bids. Yeah.
Captain, you got something to add?
Yes, for Mr. Giles, he did meet with us about this need. And obviously, we brought this to you early on in the budget process this year. We understood because of the numbers, that it likely may not happen, but that's changed. And I think the direction of the city has possibly changed with wanting to harden our facility and get it prepared for, you know, possible storms, obviously growth. Right now, we do have a growth need. There's positions that do not have an office. Our storage space for just general storage is, is maxed out, and, and our evidence is approaching that very shortly. So this would definitely meet our shortlist of needs and take us out to at least 10 to 15 years for our building.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, I, I think he just, he just captured it right there. This, this is all going to align well with the 10-year plan that was talked about. And this brings it back into realignment, I guess you'd say, with the original proposal for your needs there at the station.
Definitely grateful for, on behalf of the state and our local representative, and each of y'all for supporting that to go through. Also, the generator, which is 200,000, and that hardening was approved, along with our 300,000 hardened dispatch center. So all this would be worked in together. It would be less disruptive if we got it all done at once with the expansion with our hardened dispatch. It would be less, uh, just kind of plugged in on the side. It would be more of a, what's the word I'm looking for? More of a, a true concept expansion rather than just a patch. So since we're getting the money from the state with, with that, with that grant that's there, and the additional monies that y'all approved should, we receive those proposals back that are in favor of this expansion. I think it would be very beneficial and less disruptive to our officers, to our staff that are working, but also get us ahead and get us where we need to be for 10 to 15 years.
All right. Thank you, sir.
That was the key phrase. It's not a patch.
Right.
Thank you, sir. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, that passes unanimously. Next item is 11-7. A resolution to rename a portion of North Green Hill Road to Old North Green Hill Road and to rename a portion of Benton Douglas Parkway to North Green Hill Road. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments from the commission?
This is, I assume, run through 911, all that's signed off.
It's under the city manager. Oh, nope. I was wrong.
It has ran through E911.
Perfect.
School board likes it.
Uh, they actually had their school address assigned North Green Hill Road months ago.
Good deal. All right. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oh, I thought you were making a question.
No, I was giving it in my hand.
All right, that passed. Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Next item is 11-8, our last item, a resolution calling for an election on Tuesday, November the 3rd, 2020, for the office of the expiring term of mayor and commissioners for District One, District Three, each with a four-year term, and District Four for a two-year term. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much.